Good night all. Oh, you've done very well my friend.
Aslam alaikum. You any, no problem, when you're in the break, thank you.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it did.
Good evening everyone and welcome back to Randwick, our first meeting back in about a year and probably two months. So, welcome back and it's good to be back. So, we opened the ordinary council meeting on the 27th of April of 2021 at 6:04pm. Councillors tonight, I'll be reading the prayer and Auntie Barbara Keely will give the welcome to country. The prayer, Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and direct your prosperant deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen. Thank you and I'll now hand you over to Auntie Barbara Keely for the welcome to country. Thank you.
Thank you Danny. Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, whose worship the mayor, councillor Danny Said, deputy mayor, all councillors that are here and the community, you, the community, who keep councils going. I'd like to welcome you all here to the land of the Bitjikul people. We are the true custodians of the land, what this council sits on and does business with. We, my people, who are the oldest continuing, continuous culture in the world and we have the oldest elders, male and female, still on country here today and celebrate and enjoy a healthy and longevity lifestyle. From the waterways, the estuaries in the land, we bid you welcome, wish you safe travels on your journeys home. But remember first and foremost, we are the people you need to walk with, talk with, embrace and offer hands with to do business. Thank you.
So councillors, I have an apology from councillor Bowen. Can I call for other apologies or lateness?
Apology for lateness for councillor Bowen and for councillor Parker.
And, oh sorry, and councillor Parker? Any further? Any other apologies? Is councillor Singh with you? Was he late? Yeah, okay.
It's councillor Singh, not to councillor Singh?
And apologies for councillor Roberts. And that's all. Apologies for lateness councillor Andrews. And a second to please. Count the move by councillor Stavreinos, seconded by councillor Luxford. Favor say aye. Against, I declare that carried. Could I have the, could I have someone move and second the confirmation of the minutes of the 23rd of March 2021? Councillor, so moved by councillor Hamilton, seconded by councillor Shuri, sorry. And then, it's all this closeness in this room. Could I have, please have declarations of pecuniary, non pecuniary interests? Councillor Stavreinos?
Mr Mayor, in relation to CP 20/21, the rezoning requests. It's a non-significant non pecuniary interest in that a number of affected properties and residents are known to me through my affiliation and association with the city of Randwick. I'm also a member of the South Juniors Club, I regularly attend the club and we regularly have our Liberal Party meetings at the club. On that note, Mr Mayor, I will not be voting on this matter tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Dusser?
Mine is a very easy, simple one. CP 2321, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Economic Development. I have properties in that area and also a family, family has properties. So, I will declare a non-significant pecuniary interest and I will vote on that matter. Thank you.
Councillor Mattson?
Mr Mayor, I declare a non-significant non pecuniary interest in item CP 18 of 21 in that I know the speaker, Ms Rona Wade, through my years on Randwick City Council. I declare a non-significant non pecuniary interest in CS 11 of 21, Heffron Park New Plan of Management in that I know Ms Kim Rosen, Ms Kim Rosen through my involvement on Randwick City Council. I declare a non-significant non pecuniary interest in CS 1521, Draft Integrated Transport Strategy as I know Mr Michael Ollott, the speaker, through my political affiliations. I also would like to just note a non-significant non pecuniary interest in NM 24 of 21. Notice of motion from councillor Dusser, Ms Barbara Keely Sims. As most councillors here, we, I know Ms Sims through her long involvement in the community. I think I'm safe on all the others.
Councillor Singh?
Mr Mayor, I declare the same interest as what were earlier declared by councillor Stavreinos. In addition to that, the other reason being to be consistent with my previous declaration, I live in close proximity to the South Juniors and as I've said before, I did not take part and I, today, tonight, I would not be discussing nor voting in this matter under section CP 20/21.
I will come back now.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A significant pecuniary interest in CP 2021. My husband's firm prepared the rezoning proposal for South Juniors. I will not be voting on this matter. And similar to councillor Mattson, non-significant non pecuniary. CP 1821, the speaker is known to me. CS 1521, the speaker is known to me through my political affiliations, but I will be voting on those matters.
Sorry, back around the council.
I just want to correct my pecuniary interest, I believe, if it may be significant being a landowner. So, I will exclude myself from voting on this matter, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Councillor Beech? So, which, which number, can you just repeat the number?
C 2321, sorry, Mr Mayor. There was only one I spoke on and that's the Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Economic Development on page 357. Thank you, Mr.
Councillor Beech?
I'd like to declare a non-significant non pecuniary interest on CS 1521 as the speaker is known to me through my political affiliations. Likewise, I'd like to declare, I will be voting on the matter. I also know the speaker, who is speaker, Ms Barbara Keely Sims, through my community work, NM 24/21 and NM 26/21. I'd also like to declare a non-significant non pecuniary interest in relation to NM 2621. I do work in correctional services, however, I will be voting on the matter.
Any further?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I declare a non-significant non pecuniary interest in CP 2021, similar grounds as councillor Singh and councillor Stavreinos. However, I am not a frequent visitor but a member and I don't live in the immediate vicinity that would impact this rezoning. I declare a significant but non pecuniary interest in CS 1121, Heffron Park New Plan of Management and CS 2021, Heffron Centre. I am a member of the city, eastern city planning panel and I will be voting during the planning panels, debate and discussion on those matters and so I won't be here for the debate or the vote on those matters.
Councillor Nielsen?
Thank you Mayor. A non-significant non pecuniary interest in CP 2221 is I own a property in a heritage conservation area. There are no changes proposed for this area. The same declarations in terms of knowing people in speakers, CP 18/21, CS 11/21, NM 25/21 and NM 2621.
Councillor Dusser? Oh, sorry, DeRosa.
Just non-significant non pecuniary interest. I know quite a few people in the chamber today and a lot of them will be talking and I'm also a member of Souths but I'll be voting on everything.
I'll tell you what. Councillor Mattson?
Just like to add an explanatory note, I am also a member, a community rep on the South Eastern Sydney Planning Panel. I have consulted the director of planning on the matters before as tonight for a variety of reasons. I do not have a conflict of interest.
Any further declarations? I'll just do mine. CP 21/21, there's a non-significant non pecuniary interest. The councillors said Luxford and Parker have received a small, non-reportable, in-kind donation from an organisation contained within the strategy area. CP 20/21, not given its non pecuniary, that there's a couple known to myself who are part of the Little Bay, Mr and Mrs Burst, around that. And also in CP 20/21, that Souths, I am a Souths Juniors member as well, but I will be voting on both. Thank you. Any further?
Just for CP, where am I, 2021? I also am a member of Souths Juniors, but I'll be participating as I don't frequent there very often.
Okay, so now we move on to the addresses from the public. So, this is the privacy warning. In respect to Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that the proceedings of this meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 5.20-5.23 of Council's Code of Meeting Practice. Audio/video recording of meetings prohibited without permission. A person may be expelled from the meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of the council. This is an announcement to all speakers. All members of the public addressing tonight's meeting have a maximum of three minutes in which to put their case forward. Presenters will be stopped at three minutes have expired. Councillors may ask questions of the presenters at the end of each public submission and the first speaker is...
Sorry, I'd like to move a motion to defer CP 2221 to the... I'd like to defer the motion to, sorry, the paper to the 25th of May. Okay. CP 22/21, it's the Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Heritage Conservation and I'm moving a motion to defer it to the 25th of May.
DeRosa, do I, councillor Mattson? No need to say anything. We discuss this? No, I think it's just a motion.
I would imagine there would be people here tonight who might, is there anyone speaking on it? Well, I think it's premature to move a motion for defer before we've heard a member of the public addresses on an item.
Can I speak too?
I think that's disrespectful and I would ask that the councillors actually move such a motion if they are of a mind to after the speakers.
Oh, ask the speakers, I think.
That's okay, I expected as much. So, the, then I'd like to, I'm happy to hear the speakers, but I'm deferring the motion so that we will not debate and we will not vote on the CP 22/21 tonight and we will debate and vote on it on the 25th of May for it to then be prepared for the 1st of June meeting. And I propose this because I'd like to give the residents more time for them to prepare. The process was flawed and we all know that the process was flawed and in fairness to those residents, they deserve more time for them to go away to do some independent studies, some research and also formulate their own arguments. They haven't had the time to do it.
You will allow the speakers, but the motion is to defer?
You can't, yeah, hello, can I say some point of order? This is not consistent with our practices here, Mr Mayor. When a motion, and I presume it's going to be put, is approved, is adopted, then we don't hear from the speakers anymore, we don't repeat it because we defer that to the next meeting. This is what we have been practising for all these years, we have to be consistent with that.
Question, Mr Mayor?
Question?
Question through to the director of planning. Is there likely to be any weakening of the council's case for mounting a legal argument in support of maintaining an interim heritage order for any of these proposed items or houses within those zones? I am concerned.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At the moment councillor has two current interim heritage orders. They would not be affected by a decision to defer. Those interim heritage orders stay in place for a period of six months. I do note that in one of the interim heritage orders, there is an appeal against that heritage order scheduled for 26 May, but that would not be affected by council's timeframe.
So councillors, I'll put the motion. So, this is just to delay the motion. So, all those in favour say aye. Against? I declare that carried.
There's quite a bit of discussion to and fro, can you just say, repeat exactly what we are voting on now, please?
We're voting on the actual motion to defer.
We have two speakers who are registered to speak, are they going to allow to speak?
I'll explain it, if we defer, the speakers won't be speaking. So, we're voting to move the motion and we're deferring the motion. So, that's what we're voting on, so I'm putting it to the vote, it's been asked if we put to the vote.
I just, following on from councillor Nielsen's question, could you just repeat the actual motion? Did it include the date?
For the third time, the speakers won't be speaking. We are voting on whether we defer it to make 20th of May's meeting. So, all those in favour say aye. Against, I declare that carried. Now, we have CP 18/21. CP 18/21, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Local Character. I declare it carried, I just wanted...
Mr Mayor, it has long been the practice of Randwick City Council for the last 25 years, when a councillor requests that his or her name be recorded in the minute, that you grant them the leniency of doing so.
Oh, we'll do that.
You'll be the first mayor never to do that.
Okay, so can we chant Mr Kelly, Mr Mattson's name and councillor Beech and councillor Shuri? Against? Yeah, I said councillor Mattson? Oh, sorry. So, now we have CP 18/21, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal. You can leave. So, Ms Rana Wade? CP 18/21. Three minutes, Ms Wade.
Okay, thank you very much and I appreciate the effort in putting general principles together for local character areas because everyone who lives in Randwick loves where they live. So, can I start again? Well, once again, thank you for this report because I think it's important to define local character areas because everyone who lives in Randwick loves where they live. So, it's great to get that document together. But I just want to talk about those character principles in relation to the beachside areas. As you know, there are three local character areas along the coast. There's the bay... There's the bay down the south, then there's the south coast area, then there's the north area. In the character principles for the southern coast LCA, which, and they're important, these character principles, because they'll feed into the DCP. So they're very important. Anyway, the local character principles for the southern coast LCA, which includes Marubra, Malabar and Little Bay, have among the eight character principles, maintaining the village feel of Marubra, Malabar and the Little Bay beaches. Similarly, the character principles set for the desired future character of the bay's local character area include amongst the ten principles, preserve and enhance the village feel in La Perouse. But when you come to the northern coast LCA, which includes, which covers Coogee and Clavelli, of the eight principles, there is no mention of a village feel, retaining a village feel, anything to do with the village feel. And this just doesn't make sense because certainly from the consultation that took place, there was a very strong recognition of the village feel of Coogee Beach in particular. And council, even with the recent support for businesses in Coogee Bay Road, called that project the Shared Village Project. And if you look at any real estate agents' websites or other commercial websites in Coogee, they all refer to the village atmosphere. It's an attribute they wish to sing about and talk about. And many, many, many residents hold very dear to their heart the notion of keeping Coogee a village. So I just don't understand, given the daily reality of Coogee, that it doesn't share had that same general principle as the other local coast areas. And it's not just about today. If you look at the history, the Randwick City Council website has, the village of Coogee was officially founded on the twelfth of October, eighteen thirty-eight, when the plan for the settlement for New South Wales was lodged with the colonial...
But next, a minute, Miss Way.
Pardon? Colonial Secretary's Office. So Coogee is actually, so it was proclaimed a village in eighteen thirty-eight. We're nearly two hundred years old as a village. Not only that, but we predate Randwick's proclamation by twenty-one years. Randwick wasn't established until the twenty-third of February, eighteen fifty-nine. So we are the first, Coogee is the first seaside village proclaimed in the colony of New South Wales, which probably makes it the first seaside village proclaimed in the whole of Australia. And yet, Coogee does not have its village attributes listed in its character principles. And this is a dreadful omission and I ask that it be rectified. Thank you.
Any questions for Miss Way? Counselor Mattson?
That the councillors would have to ask a question. If this body tonight did not move to insert that reference, would there be a feeling in the community that the character of the local area was being misrepresented in some way by...
Oh, very well said, Counselor Mattson. Very well said. Yes, indeed. I mean, it's a farce. Here's, I'm looking at council's own website. It refers to Coogee Village, talks about it being proclaimed in eighteen thirty-eight. It's there in black and white. So, and it is quite possibly the first seaside village, well, more than, it is the first seaside village in the colony of New South Wales, hence probably Australia. It's very important. It's probably more important in Coogee than other beachside areas in a way, but it's really, it's wonderful that it's included for all the other beachside areas. So if we do include it for the northern coast area, which I'm requesting, we include it for both Coogee and Clavelli. Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, Miss Way.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Miss Way, and then we'll have decoration.
Relation to CP twenty-three slash twenty-one, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal for Economic Development. It's a non-significant, non-procurnary interest. I'm a business owner in the city of Randwick, but I will not be benefiting at all from this, from this report tonight. And so I will be voting on the matter as a business owner. Thank you.
So now we have CP twenty slash twenty-one, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal, resigning request and speaking...
I have to leave.
Actually, I think there's a few people. This is CP twenty slash twenty-one, all those who declared an interest, which is the resigning request. Yeah, Mr Donald Sutherland, but I just wait till everyone leaves. Thanks, Ted. Ted, did you declare an interest in this too? No, this is South Sydney. Resoning request, which is South Sydney and... Hey, we just, pardon? No, are you Guy?
Yes.
Yes, you're next. I've got against him one day. Sure. Hey, I've just got Coram. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, my name is Donald Sutherland. I'm the owner of two oh four Malabar Road in South Coogee. And I'm here to motion against the decision to maintain R two low-density residential status for the subject area. And the area that was defined in a town planning proposal submitted last September as a precinct. My property is on two oh four Malabar Road and is part of a block of five apartment blocks, which are directly adjacent to mine. They're all six and eight bedroom apartments in a row. They were all developed as one lot, with the exception of my property, which remains a two-storey property. So I put in a proposal to rezone from R two to R three. And the reasons for my justification were that it's inappropriate zoning for the subject area and that the properties do not conform to R two low-density zoning and rezoning would resolve an anomaly in the LEP. There is absolutely no planning rationale for maintaining the existing low-density zoning and it would not change the character of the immediate locality. With the exception of my property, most of the properties in the precinct are being used for purposes that are prohibited under the current zoning. So if I want to build, which I would like to, an apartment block of six units, I'm currently prohibited under the provisions of R two low-density zoning, which doesn't make sense. The application of a medium-density zoning is appropriate as the area already has a medium-density character due to the nature of the existing development, i.e. the five blocks of apartments. So I am seeking approval here tonight to rezone the precinct. And the precinct is defined just by Popplewell Park and the first two blocks coincidentally, where our townhouses are actually currently zoned R three. It then changes from R three to R two and extends towards Nemboida Street and round Gregory Street, which is always zoned R two. So I'm asking for that precinct that I've defined to be integrated with the current R three zoning, which includes the Marubra Council Houses. The first two blocks are already R three. So it would make strategic planning sense to integrate the small section of where I am with the other apartment blocks to be rezoned as R three.
Just grant your extension for a minute there. Thank you.
Let's be finished. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr Sutherland? No? Thank you, Mr Sutherland.
Thank you.
Now speaking for is Mr Guy Quarantini.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight I speak in support of CP twenty slash twenty-one, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Resoning Request. I specifically speak on behalf of the residents of Malabar Road and Nemboida Street in support of Randwick Council's and the Randwick Local Planning Panel's recommendation that to not support isolated, also referred to as spot rezoning of two zero four Malabar Road, South Coogee, and that no change is recommended to the existing land use, zone or development standards, including maximum height and floor space ratio for two zero four Malabar Road, South Coogee. I provide the following justifications for the site at two zero four Malabar Road, South Coogee, not to be rezoned. First, two zero four Malabar Road, South Coogee doesn't fall within those sites, being further investigated as part of the town centres and strategic centres, Buffick areas, and it's not located near a B two local centre or a strategic centre as specified under the actions of the housing strategy. Malabar Road in South Coogee is not an area identified for housing growth in the LSPS and housing strategy. Third, the reasons provided to spot rezone or upzoning, as it's referred to, for property two zero four in isolation, does not comply with upzoning, spot rezoning requirements and should not be considered for gateway determinations. It's not in the public's interest for that property to be rezoned in isolation or otherwise. Local residents I spoke to, immediately south of the applicant's property at two zero six Malabar Road and as far as two sixteen Malabar Road, which are on the southern side, all said that, that they would not like to see the property rezoned. My property, which is immediately north, next door to his, and also residents from twenty-five Nemboida Street, lying Lisa, also suggested they would not like to see the properties rezoned and that nor would they like to see the FSR or maximum height limits changed. And that they would prefer for the R two low-density residential FSR and height limits to remain. I couldn't find any persons that I'm aware of or any neighbours or public support for rezoning that site. Residents I also spoke to said they were alarmed that they were not previously consulted at all regarding the two zero four Malabar Road application to be rezoned and expressed concern regarding the significant adverse and unwelcome amenity impacts isolated rezoning of two zero four Malabar Road will have on their families. The rezoning will allow for twelve-metre-high apartments to be constructed at the site, which would adversely impact residents of two zero two and two zero four, that's both sides of his property, and residents in Nemboida Street from overshadowing, lost sunlight, increased noise, increased traffic, increased housing density, lost privacy, reduced street parking, et cetera, et cetera. The compound in effect of these adverse amenity rezoning impacts would result in downward pressure on property prices.
You've got an extra minute.
Thank you very much. Residents across Sydney have also been fighting for the so-called spot rezoning to be not allowed anymore. From what I understand, the planning minister stated that he would not like spot rezonings to be used anymore in Sydney. He also said he wanted councils to update their local planning controls more often rather than use the controversial, rather than the use of controversial spot rezoning. Thus, we strongly agree with and support Randwick Local Planning Panel's findings and the council's recommendations for two zero four Malabar Road not to be rezoned in isolation and that for the FSR and the maximum height limits to remain as they are. In summary, two zero four Malabar Road is a single lot surrounded by R two low-density residential land and should not be supported for rezoning in isolation. Thank you.
Counselor Mattson?
You're basically in support of the recommendations in the business paper, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Further questions? Thank you, Mr Quarantini.
Just to answer your question, Murray, the papers state that they do not support the rezoning of that property.
Answered. Thank you. So now we move to CS eleven slash twenty-one, Heffron Park New Plan of Management. Speaking against is Miss Kim Rosen. Here can we ask the, before you start, Miss Rosen, to just get everyone to come back in. Dylan, can you talk?
Good evening, Mayor.
Miss Rosen?
Am I right to start? Good evening, Mayor, councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the Heffron Park twenty-two, twenty-one Plan of Management. As a rate payer for the last forty-seven years and as a member of the gymnastics community, tonight I'd like to share my concerns about several components of the plan. Basically, I want to cover three areas. One, issues with the consultation. Second one is Heffron Centre uses and the last one is privatisation of public land. So I hope I have enough time to do that. Starting with the consultation, this Plan of Management advises that following community consultation and public hearings, the relevant feedback will be reported to council for its consideration. My very reasonable questions regarding when the size of the gym was decided, by whom and on what expert advice, have still not been answered. I finally found the answer to when in your February frequently asked questions. The thirteen-hundred square metre decision was actually made before August two thousand and seventeen. So I'm asking why council withheld this information from the experts, the gym community and rate payers for nearly three years. Given council received about a hundred and fifty written submissions or more on the DA on the inadequate size of the gym, why was this issue omitted from the list of key issues on page five, page five of the Plan of Management? The Plan of Management says that your consultation activities ensured matters raised by the community were addressed as part of the project, but with respect, they weren't. The Plan of Management says where relevant, the project design was revised to address the issues raised by the community, but with respect, it wasn't. I can therefore unfortunately have little confidence that the feedback from the Plan of Management consultation will be adequately reported back or taken into account. So I'll just go on to, that was my consultation concerns. So now the Heffron Centre uses. We have the South Merchandise Store and the cafe within the Souths High Performance Centre. And I'm just wondering how they can be seen as community uses? We've got stores over the road and cafes over the road. The only, only thought I have is that perhaps the community is needed to spend money in these places, but apart from that, I really can't see how they are for the community. So there are meeting rooms and lecture rooms and I noticed in the Plan of Management, five hundred and twenty hours per annum has to be provided to the community for each of those. So I guess that covers those minimum requirements of community use. So then we have the showcase field, that is fourteen thousand square metres. Also, there's been some time allocated to the public for that, but I'm actually wondering about the...
You've got an extra minute there, Miss Rosen.
Okay, thank you. I'm wondering about the parking for the showcase field because I can only see a hundred and forty car parks. That's supposed to work for the indoor sports centre, the gym and Souths and the showcase. So if I could just go on to some pictures about the privatisation of the land, which I'm very concerned about as a rate payer. So here we have, that's the tennis centre, which is currently run by a business. And in the next one, the High Performance Centre, basically a business, Souths Rabatose is a business. And I couldn't make my last slide word, but I would just like you to imagine what happens if the white area, which is the indoor sports centre and the gymnastics area, is also given to a private business. The result is going to be a rather huge tract of public land that is going to be used by private. So in other words, privatisation of public land. And I'm very concerned about that. I just wanted to throw in, I wonder if all the councillors are aware that there is an alcohol licence listed in the term sheet.
Do you mind taking questions?
Sure.
Counselor Mattson? councillor Mattson.
Could you just elaborate on your last point? You made a point about a liquor licence, I believe.
Oh, yes, the liquor licence, it's in the lease and licence section, which is publicly available. I was rather perturbed to read that not only is a liquor licence going to be applied for, but council is said in that document that they would provide reasonable assistance to gain that licence. Now, I'm a grandmother, a mother of little gymnasts, young people using the...
Thank you, Ms. Rosen, that's answered the question.
I'm concerned.
Any further questions? Thank you, thanks, Ms. Rosen.
Thank you.
So now we have C S fifteen slash twenty-one Draft Integrated Transport Strategy. Speaking for us, Mr. Michael Olive.
I think I'm probably actually speaking against, you know, sort of. I know, that, my bad, that was my fault. But it's just because I think there should be an addition to this. I think while I generally applaud the thrust of the draft integrated transport in form draft integrated transport strategy, I think that there is a serious omission of a reference to an electric vehicle plan. There are references to the, to electric vehicles, but not an actual plan. If we look overseas, we can see that there are some countries, such as certain Scandinavian countries, where fifty percent of the vehicles are electric vehicles. So this is going to be a real issue that we're going to have to be, have to deal with pretty soon, pretty soon. In outcome one, it does say that, you know, sort of the council should be supporting the growth of electric vehicles, and I applaud that. If we look at one point one seven, it says that there should be a push to have charging, electric vehicle charging in new residential and commercial buildings. And there should be retrofitting in existing buildings with subsidies, and that's great. I own an electric vehicle and I have, you know, sort of a charger in my garage. And I think that's where most of the charging will come from. But I know from travelling, you know, sort of up the coast and down the coast, that you have to try and find chargers, and that's where publicly available charge, electric vehicle charging stations will come in or those who, you know, sort of run out of charge and need them, you know, sort of on the spot. If we examine the, what Randwick Council have done up to this point, I applaud them because they installed electric vehicle charging stations near Coogee, one up at Randwick, one in the, near the Environment Centre. But additional to that, there is one proposed right near Dunningham Reserve in a cul-de-sac right on the beach, which is really busy. And that will make it, make the traffic there just so, so difficult that I don't know exactly how that's going to work. So what the, what I think the council actually needs is a plan of how electric vehicles are going to impact and where they should be. At the moment, it's a bit higgledy-piggledy. I think also that there are upgrades that are going to happen with electric vehicles. Already, the, the electric vehicle charging stations are probably a bit dated. They're seven or twenty-one kilowatts.
Mr. Olive, you've got an extra minute.
They're seven or twenty-one kilowatts. But now, you know, sort of the standard is fifty, even three hundred and fifty kilowatts. So, you know, sort of what, the council has to have an idea of how they're going to deal with this. If I had my way in the best-of-all-possible world, I think that I would be replacing service stations with, you know, sort of places for electric vehicles to go to be charged. And that would be, give us the least disruption. If we look at somewhere like Shoalhaven City Council, they've already got a policy on this, a very detailed policy. And it's about electrical vehicle charging stations on, on public land. And I think that's the, that's a start, but I mean, that's a different, a different L G A and it has different, different needs than, than Randwick L G A. And so, you know, sort of...
Thank you, Mr. Olive. Any questions for Mr. Olive? Councillor Mattson.
Mr. Olive, thank you very much. Look, I would be, I'm always careful as to whether or not the council should outstrip the community. Do you think the community would be expecting the council to go down this direction for a definite plan or policy?
Well, I mean, in my opinion, if council doesn't shape events, events will shape council.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Olive. Now we have N M twenty-four slash twenty-one No motion from councillor Dusserza Sexual harassment. And speaking for is Ms. Barbara Caneli Sims.
Correction, Mr. Mayor, Keely Sims. Oh, Caneli, Keely. Yep. Okay, sexual harassment. It's not on. It's an injustice to women. Also, men have been violated by this. Data will show that workplace leadership, C E Os, managers, board members and chairs is still overwhelming, dominated by men today. It is a socio-economic and/or cultural thing. Bullying and assumptions, leadership, career progression, rigid gender, these are roles dominated by men, demonstrated attitudes, behaviour, lateral violence. Understanding all this, we need to equip ourselves with resources. Sexual jokes do hurt. Sexual harassment in the workplace, workplace harassment, seek support from friend, trusted team. If you have a safe workplace environment, seek someone out who can help you. When it's reported, what happens? Because I did speak out about sexual harassment by a worker. I took it to the manager and he said, if you talk about it, Barbara, you'll open up a can of worms. I was the victim. I've suffered this since. I've also suffered sexual harassment and abuse as a stolen generation child. This I carry from an eight-year-old. My sexual abuse was by women, not men, women, in a bathtub, how humiliating and hurtful. I've suffered this trauma and torment all of my life. And I think time needs to change, we need to have lateral thinking done. How do we do it? By having cultural events done where we can get our men up front, stand on a pedestal, let's humiliate you, let's put you on the board and say, why are you doing this to us as women? And then again, on the other hand, women do this as well. Women do torture their men, their husbands. And it's not easy to say overcome it as well. So I've seen this firsthand as well. When do we say enough's enough? When do we say, let's stand up, let's be counted? Let's be the people who we want to be. Let's show the world there's no place for racism, hurt, humiliation, trauma. These do torment, they lead to suicide, victimisation. You take this to the grave with you. So it's got to stop. We as a people need to stop it. Condemning of sexual harassment and violence, men's control of decision-making, limits, limits towards women, independence, rigid gender, roles of stereotype, constrictions of the masculinity and femininity, men disrespecting women with the bond and men bond together when they do this to others. So you're not alone, ladies, we're not alone, men do this to us. We've got to say enough is enough. And when do we stop it? If this council can address this and a holistic and a broader sense of way and unity, lateral thinking, we as a people across this world and across this country and in the Randrick L G A, we can say, we feel free, we feel safe. It's an environment we need to take on board and trust as well. So I myself am calling out for women and men that have been hurt by this year. Enough's enough.
That's good. Oh, do you need an extra minute or?
I'm fine.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
It's very direct, thank you.
So now we have N M twenty-five slash twenty-one No motion from councillor Mattson. Ongoing Helena Street Water Issues for Mr. Nick Shalhoub.
Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I'm back again in regard to the same issue that has been ongoing. What I've done is I've taken an update in the last downpour, which we had a few weeks ago. The S E S came out sandbagged again for the fourth time. What's been going on, as you'll see in these photos, is basically over eighteen months, the amount of mould that is coming, water that is coming through, turning into mould, that now basically has made its way under our house, as you know. It's coming up through the path, the pathways become hollow. You can see in this photo towards the back of our house where the retaining wall is between the new and the old, you can see the amount of growth of mould, the pooling of water. Basically, this water now is undermining the back end of our house. It's causing the back balcony, which is a concrete two-storey part, now to give way from the house. It's forming cracking. That's a side path which is hollow when you walk and can tap on it. That is just pooling water that is pouring out and coming up because of what's going on in number ten, where it's coming through the ag line. Again, you can see a larger version of it from the front and the rear. You can see where the S E S is sandbagged. That water is basically destroying that path. As I said, it's destroying the foundation of our house. If I can have the next one. This is the nature strip and the council footpath. The amount of water that's coming from up top and that's coming partially down and partially into our side, you can see how much water's coming through and the volume of water. And it's getting to the point where the discharge of it from number ten onto number eight, onto the council footpath is ridiculous. That's right out front of our house in this one. It basically shows the water, the soil is so saturated, it can't even cope and can't cope to take that water away. You'll see the downstream, the water is horrendous. You can't even walk on that footpath. Again, this is another section towards the front end. You'll see that that foundation footing, most of that is on our land. It's supposed to be on number tens, there's about probably a hundred mil, a hundred and fifty mil on our land. Beside that, you'll see again now, this is towards the front, same section. The ponding of that water is right beside where the pit is. That gathers all the water from ten downpipes of number ten. That basically pours into our place. And the reason that pours in, that's about two to three hundred mil thick or deep, I should say. It's basically the ag line was laid incorrectly. Instead of draining the water off, the ag line is actually pulling water out of the pit and bringing it back in and then discharging it through its pores or holes into our property through the wall, which has never been waterproofed correctly. Again, you can see how much water is in there and how much damage that's doing. And it's an ongoing for eighteen months and it never stops. And it's always the rain that's causing this.
Next to a minute, Mr. Shalhoub.
There is still more to come, if I can get the next, you can see continuously. That is the pit. You'll see that is on the left of the photo. That is where all the ten downpipes come in through the rainwater tank and discharge into that pit at the front of number ten Helena. Underneath that pit, that ag line that is against that wall to protect our side and that wall, that basically discharges. This photo here is between number ten and number twelve. It shows very clearly how differently it was made. That is made with the correct ag line, the correct fabric, the correct sock on it, and also, in the next photo, you'll see the correct blue metal that was put in. It was done to protect their home, it was brand new, but they were suffering moisture damage and flood damage themselves, even before they moved in. That pipe went in and came down, now it ends up at the pit at the bottom towards our side. So our side cops, not just the seepage from the houses further up from twelve onwards, it cops all the rainwater from number ten and it basically flows onto ours. We're copping the whole lot of it and we can't get rid of it.
Thank you, Mr. Shalhoub. Any questions? Councillor Mattson.
Mr. Shalhoub, you rang me today and you tried to run me through why you felt that the ag line, as you refer to it, was not built to the same standard as the one between your neighbours' number ten and twelve. But I couldn't honestly get my head around it, could you have another crack at it?
What I'd like to show, if I can...
Can you just? I know it's a question, but can you just say it again, so I know? Just, that's the question.
Could you explain why you feel that the ag line, which exists between your property and number ten, is not fulfilling its function?
It's basi, it's basically deliberately designed, it's not designed correctly, it's been put on top of a footing. And the reason, I found out the reason the engineer has done this deliberately is because by the time it gets to the pit thirty metres away, he's basically put it so the water cannot, to get rid of the water that's on there. But what it's doing, it's allowing the water, as you can see with this as a sample, this has got holes right through it. So whatever goes through on the top will come out the bottom. So it doesn't matter what he's done with it, it's going to fail. The waterproofing was just orange plastic. This sweats like there is no tapiro. It's never been sealed at the top of the, of the retainer wall.
Thank you, I'll take that as the answer, Mr. Shalhoub. councillor Hamilton.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks, Mr. Shalhoub. I note that councillor Mattson's motion is requesting a response from the general manager. What are, what are you hoping for, Mr. Shalhoub, from council? Considering this is a long-term issue that has been brought to council multiple times? What are you hoping to, to get out of tonight?
I would like to see that wall dug up, all that gravel. I've brought two samples if you'd like to see. They've used, as a gravel fill on my side, they've used rubbish gravel. It's basically crushed brick, crushed tiles, ceramic tiles, roof tiles, anything that they could put through a crusher. They bought that and dumped it. It's basically twenty dollars a tonne cheaper than using proper blue metal. And I've brought a sample of each if you'd like to see.
Excuse me, Mr. Shalhoub, can I just ask you? You mentioned that you want the work to be repaired. But by bringing it to council, are you hoping that the council repair the work? Because that's not the council's role. So is that what you're hoping happens? Or you're hoping that the general manager writes a response to you?
Basically, I've been through two S C barristers and they've basically told me it is not a civil matter, it's a building matter. And it should go back to the certifier and the people in charge of it. The council were brought in by the certifier back during the construction when all of this happened. Basically, as they said to me, you need to go back to the council and get them to sort this out. It's got to the point where the certifier basically has given them a certificate. I went to the engineer, I asked him to come out. The engineer gave them a certificate, he said to me he never inspected the property. He said he was meant to come five times and five times he was cancelled by the certifier. Base, the bottom line basically is, I went to the, also I went to the engineering board. I spoke to them about trying to do something about the engineer. They looked him up, he's not registered, even though he's licensed. I cannot do nothing, no one can touch him. So he can do whatever he wants.
Yeah, I, I understand you're claiming the certifier at fault. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Shalhoub. Now we move on to N M twenty-six slash twenty-one No motion from councillor Mattson. Council response to the thirtieth anniversary Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody. And speaking for is Ms. Arnie Barbara Keely Simpson.
Once again, thank you very much. Aboriginal deaths in custody is not new. It's more than thirty years old, thirty-two years plus. This has been going on as a systemic injustice to our people that's been happening to our men and women in lock-up system. When does it stop? When does a government of New South Wales and Australia say, we need to sit down, we need to talk, we need to look at things? And how do we work it out? These men and women died in custody, mainly men. Are we going along the same lines that we did with America just recently with the death of George Floyd? Nine minutes, or eight minutes rather, on his throat, strangling him until he couldn't breathe anymore. We will be down that track, not, not later, but sooner if things aren't changed and things aren't addressed and adhered to. We can make changes, you men and women sitting there before me at a local government area can make changes. You can take it to the state level. That level will take it to a federal parliamentary level where it's addressed there, whether it goes to a standing committee or wherever, you can still address it. Don't close your eyes to it because it's new, it's happening every day in our jail system. Philippa, if you work in a jail or in that system, you must know about it as well. So it's not new, it's old. Okay. When the Royal Commission was set up by Patrick Dodson and Bob Hawke, the late Bob Hawke, they addressed this to have a meaning impact on it all. Where's it gone? Stalemate, nothing's changed, nothing's happened. Four hundred and forty-seven deaths in custody and still climbing. Nothing will change. I have five pages here. I have five pages here. Four hundred and seventy-four deaths still and counting. Long Bay Jail needs to be cleaned out. Wardens need to be changed. They need cultural awareness sensitivity training needs to be done in an holistic manner. States and territories, they're in charge of their criminal justice system, which severity limits what we do and, you know, with the government of today. But the closing the gap, it's not closing, it's broadening. The horizon's even getting really, really bigger in what we do as a people. We, as a people of this country, First Nations people, we are the last people to be served. We'll always be the last people to be served unless people stand up and work, walk with us, stand with us in unity and say, let's count them in. I, in this council here, I can say honestly and truly, I have two great friends here that support me in what I do and my endeavours. I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Mr Mayor, take on board with your councillors here. Have it addressed, dear. Get your councillors to look at paperwork and view videos and see what goes on. I am mindful of the time as well, what you're looking at. Deaths in custody have continued on since nineteen ninety-one. We're now in, what, year, twenty twenty-one? And where will we go from here? Today, tomorrow, next week, next year, the year after that? The facts of Australia is rising. Our women out there work with our men in these jail systems. Okay, and I hope I do take questions on this as well. It's time for change. We can change. We can work together for change if we all sit down and sit at the one table and we have the one agenda set. And the first deaths in custody was a young sixteen-year-old, John Pat Peter, who died at the hands of his oppressors. Our leading journalist, Andrew Bolt, said, people are dying in custody because of their own stupidity. Wrong. They die at the hands of prison officers, police. I addressed Maruba Police Station Day and a cultural awareness and I let them know exactly how I felt and what should be done. And we talked about on Black Lives Matter and all those issues concerning us. I spoke to new recruits there today. Our women police are the worst offenders when they come into a community with the gung-ho tactics. And they come to La Perouse Mission and with their guns drawn, it's not on. If you want to talk to people, talk to elders, we'll sit down and address you in a mindful manner. Come sit and talk with us, come break bread with us. We are no different than what you are. We cut ourselves, we bleed red together. Thank you. I'm open for questions.
Actually, before we get to questions, Anie Barb, um, I'd like to invite you, because it is a sensitive matter and it is an important matter and it's something that maybe as the councillors would like to invite you to give us a briefing.
Yep.
And that way you could have an hour or two to explain it all and we can ask you in depth. But I'm not stopping the questions now.
That's fine.
I'm just saying it'd be great to do it in depth.
I'd welcome that.
And we'll welcome you, we'll give you a time to welcome you amongst all councillors. So any ca- questions, councillors? Councillor Mattson?
I've always been intrigued by the fact that there has not been a realistic uptake of the recommendations of the report. Why do you think that has been?
How many changing prime ministers have we had? How many changing ministers have we had in local government and state government and federal government? How many people want to sit down and take it on board and listen to and address it? How many council members here that really take this on board and say, let's talk about it? Let's nut it out, let's workshop it. Let's get some community members in and talk about it. How does it happen? It doesn't happen. So we need to have a talk fest on it. So unless we do all those things like that, we can say, we've tried it. What do we do, what are we doing wrong? How do we do it new? Unless our prime minister of the day gets real and takes things on board, we may have change. Unless our police have more cultural awareness sensitivity training and our prison officers, we need to target the prison officers with cultural awareness. I don't know how much that is done because I don't get there. I'd like to, I'd like to tell them exactly what I think and how I feel. Our lives matter, all lives matter. And we talk about black lives. We here all matter. We all matter in Australia. If we can all come together as one, walk together, the one road, look over our shoulders, my mates behind me, take my hand, I'll walk with you. If we can do this in solidarity together, we can conquer and we will overcome. Unless changes are made on that ground rude level, we can make changes. If that answers your question.
Thank you. Are you happy if we put the motion, as I've got it worded, on the business paper tonight?
I didn't get to see the business paper, I'd like to.
Can I quickly read it to you?
You can.
The council notes that the thirtieth anniversary of the Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody was marked on the fifteenth of April with claims by Australian National University academics of a low, of a low rate of adoption of the commission's recommendations. Randwick City Council will respond by joining calls for a First Nations-led body to monitor the implementation of the commission's recommendations.
Thank you. And if it's done bipartisan, even better. So we need to really sit down and address this. Um, not only that, if we've got local governments, we need Aboriginal people sitting on the, on the chairs of local governments. So it's got to start there. So if we get Aboriginal people on board in governments and state, federal or local, changes can be made. Sit down and talk to us. No one really says, I'll put you on a party ticket, let's run with me and we can address all these issues. It doesn't happen. So look at council here, how many Aboriginal people sitting at your table here? None. How many people addressing your council here tonight? One. So what's it tell you as a council? What's it tell you as a people? We, as First People, are still the cockatoos on the biscuit in fighting for crumbs. We'll forever do this unless you work with us.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Anie Barb. And now NM twenty-seven slash twenty-one, notice of motion from councillor Vich. Heffron Centre Gymnastics Facility Community and Stakeholder Consultation. Speaking for is Mr Ogena Napuli. Napula, sorry.
Uh, good evening. Councillors, in two thousand and seven, council. Good evening, councillors. In two thousand and seven, council approved the development of a modest new twenty-three-hundred-square-metre gymnastics centre to be run by the community and built partly with community money. Somehow, fifteen years later, this has come out at only fifty-six percent of the original approved size and operation potential falling into the hands of private businesses without gymnastics experience. Thirteen hundred square metres will not fit all the equipment needed to run all the programmes currently provided. Compromises will be needed. And the most likely is that competitive squads will be cut back. I am not here tonight to question how this has all gone wrong. I am here to ask you to start setting things right by simply getting and listening to the advice of experts. Some of you may be concerned that supporting this motion will slow down the project for all stakeholders. Well, as one of the largest stakeholders, our community asks you to see that by pushing ahead to keep others happy, you could be harming competitive gymnastics for generations of future female athletes. And let's be clear, we're not asking for something more than we already have. We're just asking council to safeguard our existing programmes. Councillors, I am currently a Level Ten gymnast at Bunnaroo. I have been a gymnast for seven years and competing for ten of those. Being a competitive gymnast is such an amazing honour and wonderfully unique experience. It has given me great confidence, strength and resilience. It has also given me a sense of self and a place I really truly feel I belong, where I am seen for who I am. Competitive gymnastics, being such a unique sport, teaches so many invaluable lessons and has made me into the person I am today, a person I am extremely proud to be. I have grave concerns that your decision to provide a smaller gym than what is needed will mean that my two younger sisters and many other young gymnasts will be denied the same life-changing opportunities I've had. The gym a competitive gymnast trains in is like a second home, an escape from the rest of the world. The gym is where the things that feel so impossible are made possible. This is what makes getting the new gym, the right-sized gym, so important. So councillors, I call on you to fight through the short-term difficulties and have a long-term vision in supporting pathways for female gymnasts, just like my sisters and I. Thank you.
Uh, any questions, councillors? Councillor Mattson?
Just quickly, um, a Level Ten gymnast, is that basically to an international level or to a national level?
Um, Level Ten gymnast is to a national level. So I will compete, like, I'm going to compete in, um, the Gold Coast um, for the Australian National Championships.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Vich? Oh, no, I'm just saying, is there? Okay. Councillor Vich?
Thank you for coming in and congratulations on your achievements.
Thank you.
It's very impressive. Um, do you think there would have been, um, uh, you know, when the, uh, community consultations, uh, occurred for the Heffron Centre, do you think we received many submissions in support, uh, including from the gymnastics community? Do you think that would have, uh, been different, uh, if the actual plans had been made available to the public at the time in more detail?
Um, I do think we had, uh, a lot of people that, um, expressed their interest in a bigger gym and expressed their concern on the council's decision. Um, and I think that if the plans were made, um, known to the public, that this would have had a better outcome.
Any further questions? Thank you and congratulations on this.
Thank you very much.
You spoke quite well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this, I think we'll just, oh, we've got to wait till councillor Hamilton comes back in. Okay. So councillors, before we move on and we'll move into debate, just note that the, there's a glitch in the screen up there. So we'll be using the one up there for the rest of the evening. Or till after the break, we'll fix it. Into deliberations. So CP eighteen slash twenty-one, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Panel Local Character.
Uh, I believe that councillor Shuri's. Move, um, that in an amended fashion.
Yep, CP eighteen twenty-one, exactly. So mover is councillor Shuri, do I have a second? Councillor Mattson?
Um, I have a second, sorry.
Councillor Nielsen?
Sorry, I'm just trying to find the page. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Porry, nineteen. No, this is the council operational plan, but, no. What are we doing? Thank you, sorry, I'm there now. Apologies. Um, I want to, um, add the suggestion made by, um, Ms Rona Wade that we, um, incorporate maintaining the village feel of Kujee and Clavelly Beaches into our, um, Northern Coast LCA local plan. Do I have a second? Oh, councillor Nielsen.
Shuri, don't need to.
Don't need to? We're good? Okay. Um, okay, do we need to vote on that or we're just taking it as read that we're going to do that? Okay. Okay. Um, we all heard Ms Rona Wade speaking and, um, it was, I think she had a very compelling argument for, for including this, for if it's included for everything else in our LGA, why would we not include it for, for Clavelly and Kujee? So, um, I commend this to you, councillors, and I hope that you agree with this.
Councillor Nielsen, is she?
Yes. I think, um, councillors, if you're looking at your business paper, as councillor Shuri, the mover of this motion, referred to page nineteen, and you see that midway down the page, it says, um, the character principles for Northern Coast LCA are as follows, and there's a list of dot points. And the dot points end before they get to the point of maintaining the village feel of Kujee and Clavelly Beaches. So that is the important addition that is being added to this, um, a motion that, uh, sorry, to this plan as the current stand position is. And what we are doing, what we are saying, the mover and my, and the second and myself are saying is that we are consistent with what we have said for the other locations, namely the village feel at Marubra, Malabar and Little Bay Beaches. And I think it's very important that we acknowledge the significance of North Coast LCA and the Marubra, Malabar and Little Bay Beaches. And I think, um, as the speaker told us, that the, uh, village feel is constantly referred to whenever you're seeing things about Kujee and Clavelly. And it was presumably inadvertently left out, but it's top priority that it be put back in as an important point, principle of the, the character principles for the Northern Coast LCA, fellow councillors.
Any further speakers? Councillor Mattson?
Just following up on that. If you go to the next page, page twenty-one, um, and go to the bottom there, you've got the character principles for the Southern Coast LCA. And at the very end of that, you have the bullet point, maintaining the village feel at Maruba, Malabar and Little Bay. If you go over the page to, um, twenty-three, you, um, halfway down the page, you've got the, um, uh, for the, the bays, as it's referred to, the bays local character area. You go down there, I think to the third bullet point, and there it is again. Preserve and enhance the village feel in La Perouse. Um, for the last number of local council elections, I have seen and a lot of the literature put out by candidates at one party or the other are referenced to maintaining the village feel. Um, I, uh, today, I, I went through the heritage listing, uh, in our LEP and there's, I think, if my arithmetic is correct, there's some seventy-five listed heritage items in Kujee alone, which suggests to me that, um, there's a, a de facto recognition by the council that there is a certain character, it is an old-style, um, village atmosphere. So I commend the mover of the motion.
There's no further speak, oh, sorry, question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is, I just wanted to clarify, um, because I'm, I'm in general agreement, that on page nineteen, what the amendment is asking is for the inclusion of a bullet point similar to that on page twenty-one, maintaining the village feel at Kujee and Clavelly. Is, is that correct?
Yeah. That, that is correct, you've got it correctly. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The councillors, I put all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, so to clear that carried. CP twenty slash twenty-one, I'll need, um, those to leave.
Yes, sorry, got to go. Ta-ra.
Okay, I'll wait till.
Now we've got nine now, because K was here before.
Yeah, he was here before.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, because I want to go to bathroom.
We'll start because we can start, we have got quorum. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have got quorum, so we can start and we'll just wait till he comes back. So councillor Vich, you.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to move, uh, this report in an amended fashion, which is that, uh, the, uh, properties that are either within or immediately adjacent to, uh, the K-to-K area be deferred, uh, for further strategic planning investigations. Some of those, uh, properties had recommendations, uh, for an uplift. Uh, some didn't. And I, yeah, so this would be, uh, B, so on page one hundred and sixty-nine, uh, B, and then over the page, D, E. and I'm not quite sure.
Sorry councillor Vichu, just, just for the sake of the minutes, I might have to get you to slow down and, so.
Apologies.
You might have to start again and just go through, sorry, and just, so we can talk.
Because. Okay, sure, this is on page one hundred and sixty-nine, B, five fifty-eight, A to five eighty, Anzac Parade. Sorry, one hundred and sixty-nine. Yeah, I'm just. The, the point, the point is, is that, well, for example, I received a phone call from a resident today and she was not aware that, who had put forward, it was one of the residents who had not been supported, for example. She had not received notification that this was on the business papers. Further, furthermore, for example, there's a very significant uplift on one of these properties of twenty metres. That is the Souths, because there's a, because there is a mix. It's, it's simply to put it in, there's quite a significant amount of properties on page one hundred and seventy-one that are being recommended for further strategic planning investigations. Therefore, just because of the complexity of this and for the amount of different people affected in different ways, I believe that, that these properties either within or immediately adjacent to the K to K be deferred for further strategic investigations, along with quite a number of other ones that have received that investigation.
Do I have a second, by the way? I have no second, sorry, so it's lapsed.
Page one hundred and, um, sorry, page one hundred and seventy-one. Rezoning request, two and four Harborn Road, I think I mentioned this before, but it's, can someone tell me where Harborn Road is in Kensington? Because it doesn't exist.
So.
So it's an error which had been raised before.
Can we just change that to Kingsford? Go ahead. Seconded by councillor De Roche.
Just in relation to councillor Luxford, does the general manager have delegated authority to correct grammatical errors like the ones she's identified, which I take as Kingsford, is it?
It's geographical, like we're voting for something in Kensington that doesn't exist.
Wow.
You're grammatically changing it, it appears as Kingsford in the research.
Your reference, yes, obviously locals would get confused, but it is Westmore.
Okay, it's only on page one seventy-one.
Councillor Luxford, we'll just listen to the answer.
Through, through you, Mr Mayor, as part of the minutes noting the error that was picked up by councillor Luxford, we will correct that in the minutes, that councillor, if councillor Hamilton's motion goes through as per.
So councillor Hamilton, go ahead.
I'd like to foreshadow an amendment. Okay, so this is, this is a list that we've known is, was coming our way. We have voted step by step to progressively push this to gateway determination, and so this is the final list. Yeah, I'd just like to also just point out that page one seventy-one says Kensington, but one seventy-three and onwards says Kingsford, so it isn't so much as a geographical error, just a clerical error. And I wouldn't really want to say too much more, because we have spoken about this in great length since I joined council anyway, and so I put it as per the business paper.
So councillor De Roche, a second.
I think councillor Hamilton said it all, we've gone over this already.
And just a reminder, councillors, this is just putting it out to consultation. So anyone would like to speak further? Councillor Mattson.
I just reiterate what you're saying, we're asking for gateway permission from the government before we even put it on, so there'll be plenty of scope for all these issues to be addressed by the public.
The councillors, I'll, I'll put it, all those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, declare that carried, so I'll just wait till everyone comes back in the room. PS eleven slash twenty-one, Heffron Park Plan of Management. Move, recommendation councillor Devenus, second, councillor De Roche, speak on it, councillor. Yes, sorry, you're the one who had to leave, when you someone did, sorry, sorry councillor Devenus.
I guess I have a question to the director of city services. The question is, if council doesn't provide or support the plan of management tonight, then what would be the implication of this council, given that the land where the Heffron Centre is being built is on crown land?
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor, the recommendation of the business paper tonight is to release the plan of management for public exhibition. Should that recommendation not be adopted by council, then the, the project would see delay, given that there is a deferred commencement clause, requiring the plan of management to be completed prior to construction commencing.
So, Mr Mayor, we've heard now from the director of city services that part of the development application and part of the process relating to our funding relates to this council providing a plan of management in relation to this project. So if there's any delay tonight in relation to this plan of management being submitted, we risk delaying the development application and we risk delaying the project being built. It's simple as that. We cannot afford to have this matter drag on any longer than what it already has. We know that the federal and state government funding that was provided to this council was given to us back in two thousand and fourteen, and now, six and a half years, almost seven years later, we're now being told, well, you haven't spent that money. We could, anything could go wrong, we could have that funding withdrawn. The last thing this council needs to do is commit to a fifty-seven million dollar project and lose half the money, or virtually half that money, in government funding that we've been given. Where are we then going to make up the shortfall, councillors? Where are we going to make up that shortfall? That means that this council would then have to further burden its ratepayers to the tune of twenty-seven million to make up, or twenty-three million to make up all that shortfall. That's not a risk that I believe that we can take here tonight. We need to do what's right by the residents of Randwick and by this council and by other community groups that are concerned with this project. We know that there are over twenty sporting codes that utilise Heffron Park, ninety sporting organisations, gymnastics is only one of them. So we cannot for delay, we need to look at the overall benefit that this centre will provide to the community, not just one particular group, councillors, and this is something we need to consider. This plan of management is vital as part of that development application and moving forward with this project. Any delay will jeopardise this process. The next point I want to raise is that it's actually a legal requirement under the Local Government Act that this council provide a plan of management, because it manages crown land. And that's the other question, if we don't provide this plan of management, what does that mean in terms of the crown land? Could that be taken away from us? Do we lose the management of the land altogether? And then do we risk losing the project? This is something that we cannot afford to risk tonight. As much as, I know there is community, some community angst against this, but at the end of the day, we need to look at the overall picture. There are twenty sporting codes who use Heffron Park, ninety sporting organisations, okay, and gymnastics is only one of them. And I'm not prepared to risk losing a community facility like this to, you know, for one group. That's the risk that I'm not prepared to take, and I would urge you all tonight, councillors, to consider that when you make a decision to vote on this matter, thank you very much.
Councillor De Roche, a second.
Yeah, just a little comment on, you know, a letter that was received for council from Gymnastics New South Wales. The Heffron Park Master Plan is truly, is truly visionary and the facilities developed to date have been outstanding. Council's long-term commitment to gymnastics, ongoing presence within the precinct is greatly appreciated and has been vital part of the vision for New South Wales. Look, we all want to see gymnastics.
Right, that councillor.
Sorry, that's a letter to council?
From.
From Gymnastics New South Wales.
Gymnastics New South Wales, okay.
Yeah, from the. Now, basically, the, one of the governing body or some, or the body that's actually, you know, supportive, you know, the, you know, gymnastics, you know, in every way possible, is seeing that what we're doing, turning, you know, a shed that's falling apart into a high-tech one thousand three hundred square metre, you know, something that we can be proud of and later on possibly even expand on. So I think that this is a project, like Harry said, he said it all, if we stop this, you know, where do we end up? Where does gymnastics end up? And I agree with everything that gymnastics community have said, you know, they want to grow and it is growing, well, let's grow together.
Councillor Mattson.
I'd just like to say, I understand the seriousness with which the community and the councillors are taking this, but as councillor Devenus said himself, this is a legal requirement. But that does not mean that we should second guess what the submissions from the public will be or give a suggestion that we are intending to rubber stamp the outcome of this public exhibition process. So I, I do think councillors should temper to some degree the energy that they are exerting at this meeting, it's sort of inappropriate.
Councillor Vichu.
Oh, thank you. As it stands, I don't think I can support this plan of management in its current form. We've had, you know, really significant feedback from, from one of the key stakeholders for this project, the gymnastics community. You know, they have been there for a very long time, they've got a significant, you know, investment in terms of their sporting activity, the time spent, their commitment to the sport. Certainly when the DA was put on public exhibition last year, there were actually three hundred submissions voicing their concerns, I don't think we can afford to ignore that. I have, I have and will continue to raise concerns about this project and as such, and I, and I share concerns that, you know, part of the facility that's being designated as community land is in fact being used, you know, for offices and a number of other requirements that aren't going to be open to the community at all. So I think we do need to, to just, just pause, we do have time. You know, the fact that this has been going on for many years does beg the question, why weren't certain key stakeholders given the opportunity to be consulted in more, more, more detail? Why weren't the plans made public at the time of the Randwick City Plan and so on? So, yeah, I won't be supporting this report, thank you.
Yes, councillor De Souza, and then councillor.
Mr Mayor, I've heard about the urgency of this and why it's so important that we move forward on this. But when I was growing up, my parents told me the story of the three pigs. And we all know the story of the three pigs, the first, there were three pigs. One was a little lazy and built a home out of straw. Quick, did the job, shelter was provided. The second worked a little harder and decided to build one out of sticks. Did the job, bit more protection. But the third, like the gymnastics association, wants one made of bricks. They're looking into the future and they're saying, we want shelter, we want protection, but we also want excellence. That's what they're saying to us. Now, we all know the story of the wolf, and we all know when the wolf turns up and goes huff and puff and blow your hair down, they say, not by the hair on my chinny chin chin and all the rest. So the first one runs off, this to the second, and the wolf follows him and does that. But when he gets, or now in an equitable world, a gender, the wolf could be female, but when the wolf gets to the third hour and huffs and puffs and huffs and puffs, they cannot blow, he cannot, he gives up, because this is built to last. And that's all this association is asking for. To provide a facility that does what they were promised over a period of a decade. Now, I've spoken to them, I have seen documents, and it has confirmed to me that what, when I was the mayor, I met Dario, was still here, I think. He tells me how I spoke to his son in that awful place and said, we're going to build you a new facility. That was a promise Mr Brownley supported me on, and we were going to do it. We were just waiting for the hour, the moment. This is the hour, this is the moment, we can make a difference. This thing about, oh, don't progress any further, we'll lose this and we'll lose that. I think Mr Bowen, who I respect a lot, when we talked about amalgamations and, and other things, light rail and all that, he would often bring forward the fear that was put into some of us, that, yes, if we don't do this now, immediately, we will lose it. Well, I tell you, he proved us, on many occasions, his guidance was right. We still stood by our ground, the councillor Nielsen and councillor Bowen were two people stood by the ground when it came to amalgamation. They got a view that differed from council's view. When it was proven to me and others, yes, this is a valid case, we joined them. These young people and Kim Rosen and others, Dario, have put forward a case, I've got to watch that clock, put forward a case which says, let us build a facility, let us be true to our ICA values of integrity, customer focus, accountability, respect and excellence. They want us to build a facility full of excellence, to service their gymnasts for the next ten, twenty, even thirty. They were building a facility for Souths, if Souths asked us for this field they wanted, what they call a showcase field, I don't think that was part of the plan. We all agreed to it later, they brought it in. Now, these young people and this community is asking us for improvement, to do something good. Why should we be hesitating? Let us vote on this issue, the numbers may not be there, but I think when I look at my ICA values of integrity and customer focus and accountability, respect and excellence, I know that I'm on solid ground on this matter, thank you.
Any further speakers? Councillors, oh, sorry, councillor Bowen, sorry.
Question, so looking at the recommendation is to place the draft plan of management on public exhibition so as to receive feedback, consultation. That's, that's all we're voting on. No, I think I've got the answer, so I just, I just wanted to confirm that. Well, it says place draft plan of management on public exhibition. But that's, yes, but it's part of a process, we're not, we're not adopting the plan, I think is the key point. Oh, sorry. So, I, I, I'm happy to support the recommendation.
Thanks for my lateness, I take it we're now dealing with the Heffron Park Plan of Management.
Just got an interest to declare a non-procurnary, non-significant interest. I'm a member of the South Sydney Rapid Ode football club. And further, I'm aware of a number of persons who are involved in gymnastics. After living in the city of Randwick, I will be voted on the matter. Non-procurnary, non-significant interest.
Actually, before we go on, councillors, sorry, Mister Kelly. I declared I was a member of South Sydney, I just remembered. I'm also a member of South Sydney League Football Club. Sorry.
Thank you, Miss Mayor. I just have a question. On page four eighty-eight and also on the front page that was mentioned earlier by councillor Bowen, second point. So we place the draft 2021 Heffron Park Plan of Management on exhibition and receive public feedback. Now, what happens if a person writes to council and requests council to consider increasing the floor space for the gymnastics from thirteen hundred to two thousand square metres? So is this within the jurisdiction, within the purpose of this public exhibition? If the answer is no, why not? If it's yes, what are we going to do with that? Are we too late then?
Thank you, through you, Mister Mayor. The primary purpose of the consultation exercise for the plan of management is largely around the land categorisation or land use stipulated within the plan of management. So if I refer councillors to page four nine one of the business paper, it shows the proposed re-categorisation of land use within. And then page four ninety has the current 2009 plan of management land categorisation. Page four nine one has the proposed change. The exhibition period seeks consultation and feedback on that categorisation change. The plan of management in 2009 and the plan of management in 2020, 21 does not stipulate specific size of any certain facility. So that is not within the remit of this consultation exercise.
Further discussion? So councillor, I'll put it. All those in favour, say aye. Against, I declare that carried. Yep. Councillor Beach, deputy mayor. Sorry, Mister Kelly. It's been recorded. Cool, thank you. Now we move to CS fifteen slash twenty-one, Draft Integrated Transport Strategy. Do I have a mover? Oh, sorry, CS fifteen slash twenty-one, the Draft Integrated Transport Strategy. Moved by councillor Andrews, seconded by councillor Sir Avinos. So councillor Metson with your amendment.
Just referring back to the address by the speaker, I'd ask the mover and the second to add an additional point that a briefing session, a report will be brought to a, sorry, a briefing session will be set up to allow councillors to evaluate the option of at some future time adopting a comprehensive electric vehicle charging plan.
Would you like to speak on that, councillor Andrews?
Mister Mayor, I support the recommendation before us that go to public exhibition. I too agree with councillor Metson in respect to his amendments. And I would like to see in the future, and I've raised this issue before, I've looked at other forms of transport in our city. And one of those is the mobility scooter scheme. And I'm hoping something can come out of that with a further briefing session of his council. So I'm happy to support councillor Metson's amendment. And I put the recommendation before us.
Avinos, your second.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Look, when I was reading this report, I was actually very interested to see some of the statistics that were put before us by Mister Tony Lehman. And what I found very interesting is that thirty percent of residents who live in Randwick actually work in Randwick. So what that means is a number of them may not even need to have motor vehicles to get around the city. They could ride, they could walk, they could use any other means of transport rather than light rail, rather than having a car. So I found that very, very interesting. And to reiterate what councillor Metson's amendment and councillor Andrews accepting that amendment, recently we were looking to buy a car. And what I found very interesting is that the cost of electric vehicles is still far more expensive than that of petrol or, you know, hybrid vehicles. So look, I think moving forward, probably in the next fifteen to twenty years, the future may not be just electric vehicles. We may have hydrogen vehicles, we may have vehicles that run with other means of fuel. And I don't know what fuel sources the manufacturers would be looking at, but I know that electric is one of them. But look, there are other alternatives. And until the price of motor vehicles comes down, electric vehicles comes down, and, you know, we have, you know, people with, people that can afford to buy these vehicles, unfortunately, they will always be, they won't be popular. They won't be popular. And the statistics still show this, where you've got, you know, only 1.4 or 1.5% of total car sales every year being electric vehicles. The other 98.5% are either hybrid or petrol. So whilst the cost of electric cars is too high, that will never be an alternative for the average, everyday person. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councillor Nelson.
I'd like to propose an amendment, and that is on page five seven two. And under the strategic approach 1.2, where we say provide an additional 10 kilometres of safe cycling routes by 2031. It's been pointed out to me that at this rate, that'll mean one kilometre. And councillor Stavreinos is good at maths, you can work it out. Councillor Stavreinos, one kilometre? Yeah. So we're not going to make much progress. So I was proposing that, an amendment that we put in a more ambitious target. So we amended to 30 kilometres of safe cycling routes by 2031. It's a target, but I think it makes us look more responsible and certainly helps us fit in with a lot of the state government policies, which is to encourage us to ride our bikes and walk.
Councillor Andrews just would like to add that to the. Thank you. So as a speaker, yeah, or Chris. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I would just like to propose an amendment. It relates to page 572 of the business paper. It is 1.16. The current Integrated Transport Strategy reads, participate in ongoing conversations with transport for New South Wales regarding mass transit solutions and their impact on the LGA. And I would like to add the words, in order to facilitate community knowledge and participation in the process. Full stop.
Well, I can only a second round unless you accept it. It's accepted. If there's no more amendments, I think I'll put it. All those in favour, say aye. Against, I declare that carried. We have a notice of motion, NM twenty-four slash twenty-one. A notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, sexual harassment. Councillor D'Souza, you need to speak on your motion. Do I have a second? Councillor Andrews.
Councillors, this term we've challenged gender inequity, injustice, oppression suffered by minorities, especially our indigenous people. And of course, we address marriage equality. Tonight in this chamber, we'll address the present scourge eroding the confidence and job opportunities of many in our society. That is sexual harassment. Our shared challenge, councillors, to navigate our council through one of the most drastic social scourges of our time. The community expects us to show leadership on this issue. They expect us to ethically act with empathy and play our part in solving social problems. And one of the most pressing social problems today is sexual harassment. Sexual harassment is unacceptable at any time and in any place and under any circumstances. The law defines sexual harassment as unwelcome sexual behaviour that causes a person to feel offended, humiliated or intimidated where a reasonable person could have anticipated that reaction in the circumstances. As a responsible council, we need to have policies in place to protect against sexual harassment and procedures in place where complaints of sexual harassment can be addressed by senior council staff in a sensitive way and complaints reported. As Any Barbara said, and I always respect, how would Any Barbara, she always brings her own experiences into what she expresses. And she said she herself was a victim of sexual harassment. And when she took it to her senior, she was all, oh, Any Barbara, we shouldn't be discussing this or going further, it'll open a can of worms. And this is the excuse people often use or upper management. And the reason I bought it was because the board makes decisions and sets the tone. But anyway, come back to Any Barbara, et cetera. The thing is that if there is an empathy shown or understanding, these matters are allowed to rot and they create a terrible culture in an organisation. And that's why any complaints should be treated seriously and handled in accordance with the complaints procedure in a timely manner. At recent revelations by Brittany Higgins and others, it appears that the complaint reporting procedure in place let the victims down. And therefore, we should periodically review them. It is noted that we do have a clause in our code of conduct which relates to harassment and discrimination. My motion aims to strengthen this code with specific attention to sexual harassment. Together, we need to take a position that sexual harassment is unacceptable and will lead to immediate dismissal. This has now been legislated on and applies to all politicians, judges and public servants. And they were out of the loop before, but now they're in it. Needless to say, a fragmented approach to such a serious problem would fail. We need to focus on our attention on sexual harassment and bad behaviour in the workplace. So perpetrators will be exposed and robust policies put in place to address the scourge. But if not treated, will cause not only distress for our workforce, but we'll lose good staff. Now, also, I would address, and I spoke to the general manager on this, we need to ensure our staff are trained, and she assured me they are, empathy training, so they are sensitive to people's concerns and complaints and handle it in a sensitive manner. The council also have requested, and I hope you will support me on this, reviews its existing policies and procedures to make sure that we are up to date and accessible to victims of sexual harassment. Now, on that note, I will conclude. And if anything I've said has caused distress to anyone, help and counselling is available on 1-800 RESPECT. Thank you very much.
Councillor Andrews.
Yes, thanks, Mister Mayor. I had the opportunity to listen to Any Barb's submission to council receiving via the internet. And I heard Any Barb what you said tonight. And I totally agree with your sentiments in respect to sexual harassment. I support this motion tonight as we are strengthening the council's code of conduct in respect to sexual harassment in the workplace. And I'm happy to support councillor D'Souza's motion.
Yeah, councillor Schur.
I wonder if councillor D'Souza would agree to adding bullying into his strength in its code of conduct for staff, councillors and council advisory, so sexual harassment and bullying? Would you agree to that?
Putting forward. And if it'll improve the systems and make our code of conduct more robust, I'm happy to take that on board, yes.
Beach.
Thank you, and I'm very happy to support this motion. And I'd also like to thank Any Barbara for coming to speak because to be a survivor of sexual abuse, it's so important to hear that testimony and also just so difficult for people to speak out. So thank you for being so brave. And, you know, your testimony was heard, obviously, by everyone here tonight and anyone listening through the audio stream. And maybe that will also allow others who've experienced abuse to give them the encouragement and support to step up and speak up. As does this motion. It will show leadership in the community that it is safe to come and speak out. Nothing is 100% safe. However, we can try to improve. You know, I was having a conversation with my niece, who's a second year university student. Because of everything that's been out in the media, she's been having lots of conversations with her peers, male and female. Some of her male friends still don't get it. Some of them do and some of them don't. And she said to me, we are just so sick of being the ones who have to explain this to people. You know, why is it my job? It should not be my job to tell people that this is not okay, that this is unacceptable. We need male leaders, just male anyone to actually stand beside the women in our community and express to your friends and colleagues that enough is enough. Now, I have friends and family members who have been a subject of abuse. And I can tell you, it is a lifelong trauma. This is not a joke. This is an important motion. We have to keep speaking out. We should have these motions in every council term, every year. We should be continuing to speak out. And to anyone who is listening tonight, who has felt they could not speak out, please come to your council. If you cannot come to anyone else, come to one of your councillors. Because this council is saying enough is enough. We support you and we are here for you.
Councillor DeRosa.
Just want to say that every time Any Barb talks about something, it usually reaches the heart. And not often do we sit here and we listen to somebody speak and then we start clapping. And we clap not because, you know, Any Barb's just spoken loud. We clap because of the substance that she, you know, says. I mean, it's the first time that I actually heard where a man is included in the sexual harassment. Any Barb said it a few times. Men are also victims and in many cases, that's not acknowledged. You know, we're not all Bob the Builder or, you know, some macho freaked out muscle person. You know, we're all sensitive. I myself have helped, you know, three people deliver babies that had no partners or they went through abuse with the. went through abuse with abusive partners. You know, I grew up watching, you know, my mum, you know, get abused by my dad. My dad is a perfect man now, but he wasn't then, you know, we had to come to another country for, you know, for us to, you know, to start again and, you know, and bring our family morals, values and love. And, you know, my dad now is one of my heroes because he actually, you know, when he came here back in 1972, you know, he realised the love for my mum and, you know, the person that he was was horrible. And it's a great motion from Noel, you know, and it's great that, you know, Lindsay, you know, added bullying into this because, you know, when we talk about harassment, bullying is just as bad, and in many cases, it actually sort of takes over. I think it's a great motion, I fully support it, I've got shivers, you know, going down my arms, and I'd just say, "Well done, Noel."
councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is a very important motion, and I echo much of the sentiments at councillor Veach, councillor D'Souza and councillor De Rocha. I would like to make one correction, and it's a serious correction, that if anyone has experienced sexual harassment in the workplace, they can go to the commission, so humanrights.gov.au, and they can go to the police, and that's the best place. Go to the police to report it because it's not something that can or should be hidden away, and it should be investigated by the appropriate authorities immediately and the person or people held to account. So, I'm not trying to take away anything that councillor Veach has said, but I do really want to stress that they are the best people to speak to in the first instance, rather than coming to one of us, because we would direct you to the police or to your employer or to the commission. Thank you.
Any further speakers? Therefore, I'll put it, all those in favour say aye, those against, declare that carried. So now we have NM25/21, notice of motion from councillor Mattson, ongoing Helena Street water issues.
Thank you very much, councillor.
Do I have a second, a second by councillor D'Souza?
Should I address the motion first or... Thank you. Look, I've used the words formally tabled because that was the traditional way at council meetings of putting documents before the council. In traditional times, a document was laid on the table and it then became a document of the council. So essentially, what I'm asking for is that this collection of video recordings supplied by Mr Shalhoub get that status. I do believe that it is the duty of all councils to focus on what is one of the prime problems in their planning system, it's actually the building system, it's the private certification system. Every council has its particular project that it can point to where the oversight that was supposed to be provided by the private certification system didn't work. And for us, I'd like us to recognise that in the case of number eight Helena Street, that there is an issue, there's something wrong there. Mr Shalhoub did his best to explain to me today the significance of a misplaced ag line or agricultural line, as I learnt. If the line is put in correctly, then it will serve its duty. It will take seepage and convey it away from one property out to where it can be safely disposed of into the council system. But as I understand it from Mr Shalhoub, if that ag line is placed incorrectly, it can actually have the opposite effect, it can cause a pooling of water. And Mr Shalhoub is arguing that this is what has happened between his property and number 10, and he is advancing the argument that it's also going to happen between number 10 and 12, or to put it another way, will move that stormwater down to the boundary line of his property. Something is definitely wrong, I know that I've gone on about this issue for a long time, but I do it in the knowledge that there is something wrong with the private certification system in New South Wales. We all accept it, we've all seen the towers, we've all seen the cracks in other buildings, we know what's happening, it has to be addressed, and I think by allowing the formal tabling of this collection of video recordings, we give to the council an asset, a resource, part of our resource kit. Thank you.
Is there an amendment?
Yes.
Yep, I'll go to the amendment, go to the amendment first.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm in support of the motion, I believe that councillor Mattson has done a fantastic job in liaising with this resident, giving them the time, the patience and allowing them the opportunity to bring this matter back to council time and again. But what I would like to add is that add a paragraph to this motion that future issues on the matter of ongoing Helena Street water issues be directed to the general manager or the delegated officers in the first instance for their professional resolution. So it supports the motion that responds by delegating the general manager to provide a response. And why I'm offering this amendment is because the situation that we have in front of us is councillor Mattson has personally taken it on board for him to advocate on behalf of this resident, and if councillor Mattson was not to be in council after this term, then we're setting this resident up for, it's almost a false economy, that I come to you when it comes to council. And I really believe that the best course of action is to redirect it to council staff so that they can appropriately respond and take the matter up, rather than it being returned to us for us to debate. Because what we're being asked to debate... Well, what I would say is what we're being asked to debate is whether this is a civil or a certifier issue matter, and that's something that we don't have the professional expertise to make the decision on. And so we're asking, you know, basically dividing a group of people on a for and against on whether we believe this person has a valid concern that the council should be taking care of. And I don't think that that's a position that we should be put in, I believe that the council staff should be the ones to take care of the matter. If the underlying objective of this motion is to push a change to certifiers in New South Wales, then another motion needs to be put forward because we should not be... Yes, that's right. So we should not be using someone's personal, you know, very serious personal challenge with their family home is being obviously damaged to leverage an ulterior motive, and that is to change or impact the certifiers authorities or their professionalism in New South Wales.
So councillor Serenius, a second?
Look, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm happy to second this motion because I do note, amendment, sorry, I do note that Mr Shalhoub has come to council on numerous occasions to outline his concerns related to this issue. And the reason I'm supporting councillor Hamilton's motion or amendment tonight is because I feel that council does have some obligation to investigate this matter, and rather than having councillor, rather than having Mr Shalhoub coming here every few months to show us this evidence, it would be better redirected to the people and the staff in council who can deal with this matter. Now, when we had our first council meeting in February this year, the first motion I brought forward to this council was that we give increased powers to council staff to investigate the work of private certifiers. I cannot stress the importance of this because I know that I've had many residents in my own ward who have complained about the work of private certifiers. As it stands now, council is a toothless tiger. We are a toothless tiger, we do not have the authority to override or even investigate the work of private certifiers. Well, I beg to defer with you.
I think, can you just leave it? Go ahead, councillor Serenius.
I beg to defer with you, and this is why you've had to bring motions forward to address the issue, because council does not have the authority to investigate the certifiers, and this is the reason, this is why you've brought forward these motions. So look, at the end of the day, we need to help Mr Shalhoub in this instance, council's already set the precedent, having approved these motions in the past, and now if councillor Mattson is not here in the future, these issues should be directed to the appropriate staff, they should not be brought to a council meeting when the matter's already been addressed through our staff in the past, they should go straight to the authority and the delegated officers in our council to deal with these matters. They should not be brought here, you know, constantly, and that's the reason why I won't be supporting councillor Mattson's motion.
Yes, speaking to councillor D'Souza first, and then I'll go. Speaking to the amendment, councillor D'Souza. And you're not going to speak all on that, surely?
Sorry, no, I'm going to speak on the amendment and the need, and I fully concur with what councillor, Sevrenos and councillor Hamilton had said. Council time is valuable, and there are many issues that have to be addressed. But then councillor, or Mr Shalhoub, which could be a councillor, he's attended council nine times, but in saying that councillor, Mr Shalhoub... Sorry. Mr Mayor, I ask you to seek advice from the general manager as to whether this is an illegal amendment intended to unlawfully constrain a councillor from representing his constituents. I do not believe that this is a legal...
Nothing to do with that.
Through Mr Mayor, I don't see that it is an illegal motion.
Second question. If this amendment is passed tonight, will I be prevented from bringing a similar motion for another constituent to this chamber and asking for it to be debated? If it is to do with an ag line that is failing, causing destruction to a property, will I be prescribed by this amendment from carrying out my duty to my constituents?
Helena Street's mentioned in A and B, but I'll let the general manager...
Surely is relatable to any other property in this...
Through you, Mr Mayor, the wording of the amendment is in relation to the ongoing Helena Street water issues solely.
Should I put another motion referring to water issues at 8 Helena Street, will that motion be allowed to be put on the business paper?
Should the amendment be resolved as the motion, then that matter would be dealt with by staff?
Speaking to the amendment?
Question, Mr Mayor, the motion requests the general manager to provide a response. My understanding is that a few weeks ago, pursuant to another complaint by Mr Shalhoub, our manager, Mr Roman Wozinski and staff had investigated the matter, and we received an email reply. Question is, has Mr Shalhoub received a formal reply from our manager? If that has been done, then why do we request the general manager to provide another response?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, a very lengthy and detailed response was provided to Mr Shalhoub on, I think it was the 9th of April, and it goes into quite a bit of detail responding to each of the issues, and I know that Mr Wozinski and our development engineer has visited his site on occasions where there has been different levels of rainfall to ascertain the impacts. Mr Wozinski's conclusion is that the stormwater drainage system and the rainwater tank and drainage pits of number 10 are operating satisfactorily. His view is that the issues surrounding the seepage and subsurface water are matters that would be normally occurring in a topography where there is sloping levels between different sites, and he does not believe that he has the power under the Act to issue orders to control subsurface water and seepage water. Mr Wozinski does not believe that the water that he's pondering on Mr Shalhoub's footpath is significant and feels that it's largely a result of the surface levels of that footpath. As detailed in the letter, Mr Shalhoub, there is quite extensive analysis, Mr Wozinski has tested the stormwater system using dye and the like, and I'm not sure from an office level whether more can be done.
Can I have a second for the pudding? Have a second, all those in favour of pudding that...
Do you realise what will happen once you put this amendment into place? You will set a precedent for putting handcuffs on any councillor that goes and tries to help Mr Shalhoub or a similar neighbour in a similar situation, because that is what you will gag a councillor. I have represented my constituents since 1995. First month on council, the mayor of the day tried to pass a motion that I could only put one motion a meeting to his council. I stood up to him, I faced him down, I got a letter from the Department of Local Government saying that that was out of order. Now, listen councillors, when you are approached by a constituent who says, "Look, my elderly mother is having an emotional breakdown because she's falling down, she's becoming agitated by water..."
Is this an amendment?
No, I'm speaking to the amendment before...
No, it's not an amendment anymore, I have put it, you've asked to speak, please sit down, councillor Parker, I'm putting it because it's been asked to put it, I've had a second.
This is outrageous, Mr Mayor.
I'm asking councillor Mattson, please sit down.
No, you can only ask me to sit down when you stand, you have to stand. That is the code of meeting practice because I know it. Now you've sat down, I'm standing up again.
No, sorry, all I'm doing, councillor Mattson, I'm putting the motion.
If you want to evict me from this meeting, be aware that you are evicting me for going down to a constituent to say to that constituent's elderly mother as she clings to my arm, saying, "Please do something."
You have to sit down, it's an active disorder if you don't. Thank you, councillor.
Mattson, now councillors, putting to the vote whether we're putting this to, that's all we're voting on, whether we put it, we've had a motion and we've had a second. So putting the amendment, we're putting to vote on the amendment. Actually first, we're actually putting just a vote on the amendment, we're putting it. So the vote is whether we put it. Do I have a yea or a nay?
Nay, nay, I call a division, I call a division, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I call a division.
Call a division, all those who would like it to be put, raise your right hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Stravinos, councillor Sand, councillor Andrews, councillor Bowen, councillor De Rocha and councillor Roberts. And the mayor. All those against, raise your right hand. Councillor Shury, councillor Nielsen, councillor Beach, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Mattson and councillor D'Souza. That's the amendment, I'm just looking at the numbers, please give me one second. I can't see, I can't see from up there. So it's lost, so now, no, it wasn't? It was carried, sorry, it was carried. So now we vote on the amendment, all those in favour say aye? All those against? Raise your right hand, all those in favour, councillor Hamilton, councillor Stravinos, councillor Sand, councillor Andrews, councillor De Rocha and the mayor. So it's lost. Now, I'll put, raise your right hand, I'll do it properly. So all those against, councillor Shury, councillor Nielsen, this is against, councillor Nielsen, councillor Veach, councillor Luxford, councillor Parker, councillor Bowen, councillor Mattson, councillor Roberts and councillor D'Souza. So now we go, the amendment is lost. Councillor Mattson, I'll give you the right of reply.
You need to be on your toes because you will have your power stripped from you.
One has asked to put the motion. No, no one's councillors, councillors, it has been put. Please, you know the rules, they're just being put, councillor Bowen has put it. We have a second, those in favour are going.
I've got a question, what are we voting for, I've got a question. No, no, I know what the motion is, but I want to know what are we telling the general manager to do? What is this, is it the same, the same response?
Councillor.
What is the general manager supposed to do, is it the same content? I'm asking a question, Mister Mayor, before I vote, I need to know.
Councillors, um. Closing the debate, look councillors, this shows that you have to be on your toes, you will be maneuvered against. And I am depressed and saddened that councillors have tried to do this to me.
All those in favour, rise, so that's closed the debate, all those in favour of, of the motion, please raise your right hand. Councillor Shury, councillor Nielsen, councillor Beach. Councillors, that's unanimous, now we move on to. M twenty-six slash twenty-one. Notice of councillor Mattson, councillor response to the thirtieth anniversary Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody. Seconded by councillor D'Souza. Councillor Mattson, you have the floor.
Mister Mayor, look, um, I found the address by, um, Any Barbara to be very moving. Um. It is the, the story of contemporary Australia, the failure to respond and to put into place. The recommendations of that inquiry twenty, thirty years ago. It, it is, um, amazing that a civilised country has not been able to move forward. The, uh, report that came out from the academics, which I referred to in the background. Um, have suggested, uh, a way forward, that we get through the procrastination. By allowing the First Nations, the Indigenous people, to lead the body. Uh, to monitor the implementations of the commission's recommendations. It is not up to this council to say how the Commonwealth government should take that up. But it is up to us to reply to our constituents and support them and say to the Commonwealth, you are the Commonwealth. You need to put together a creditable body on a bipartisan basis, as Any Barbara said. To achieve what should have been done twenty or thirty years ago. It is just incredible and embarrassing to us as a nation, so I'd ask for support.
Councillor D'Souza, oh, there was a question?
Fully supportive of this emotion, but I'm just wondering whether there's something that we can put in there that's a little bit stronger in. Yeah, so. Yeah. Well, I think we definitely need to write to the local MPs, um, the federal MPs that are within our area. So that gives us a Labour and Liberal and also to our state representatives in our area. Um, but I'm also wondering whether we should be writing to, um, a, a. An Aboriginal, a local land council supporting this. Um, and can somebody else think of somebody, you know?
To other indigenous stakeholders in the area.
Yeah, and to other indigenous stakeholders in the area and also who have courage of this motion forward. Could go to the attorney general and also to the shadow. An articulate person.
Facilitate, uh, the bringing about of a First Nations led body to monitor the long overdue implementation of the recommendations. And that we would reach out to relevant Indigenous stakeholders in this area. The land council and other representatives of the local community, um, to enable us to be assured that we are in touch. With what is indeed a First Nations led dialogue.
And it pretty much looks correct.
That's pretty much, yeah.
Um, is that a question?
With the Indigenous, yeah.
It's a question, uh, in the same vein as councillor Nielsen, uh, mentioned just now. I was just wondering the move of the motion councillor Mattson would be admirable to, uh, make it stronger, for example. Uh, Randwick City Council expresses its concerns and disappointment. On the, on the low rate of adoption of the commission's recommendations. And drawing calls for a First Nations led body to monitor the implementation of the commission's recommendations.
Happy to put, uh, an additional point, but I've already addressed a First Nations led body. Um, I, perhaps we could just add the additional point, um, with.
Concerns and disappointment.
Concerns and disappointments.
On the low rate of adoption.
Of the recommendations of the Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths in custody. Thank you councillor.
For the suggestion to who we're, excuse me Mayor. And I just add another suggestion to who we're writing to, that we also, when we're writing to federal people. That's the liberal, um, what do they call themselves, liberal nationals, the coalition. Thank you. Um, we can also send it, send it to the shadow, uh, ministers in the relevant, um, departments.
Happy to accept that and perhaps we could also send it to the representations, uh, the, um, members of parliament's representing those portfolios in. Other, all other recognised parties in parliament.
Just a question, Mister Mayor, when I was listening to Any Barb's speech earlier on. I don't, I, I think that she mentioned not solemnly, uh, uh, a First, um, Nations led body. I thought she mentioned inclusive of. Bipartisan, the word I was looking for. So if we've got an elder that's here that's saying, you know, um, let's have some, you know, First Nation and some, you know, others, um. Well, got to listen, I mean, um, is that just creating a separate body altogether excluding, you know, one from the other?
Happy to reply, um, as I, I would like to point out that the study that came from these academics was a heartfelt. Way of trying to find a way forward. By calling for a First Nations led body to monitor the implementation of the commission's recommendations. That was taking it away from, uh, the European based, um, parliamentary systems that have failed. I, I understood the recommend, the suggestion of bipartisan would be First Nation representatives from the, from the co. And from the coalition, the Labour Party and the peak body. Coalition of peak bodies is the appropriate term. So if that could be put in, um. Coalition of peak bodies is.
The prime minister's not even listening to the new voice to parliament.
As I understand. I think we're good, um. The coalition of peak bodies is a, um, a recognised forum, is it? Good, um, so in reply to councillor D'Souza, if we move away from a First Nations led body. We lose contact or connection with the report which made the suggestion that the way to go forward was to be led by the peak. By the First Nations and I took bipartisan to be First Nation representatives from any sort of political persuasion. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I fully support this noble motion. We had a Royal Commission into the Aboriginal deaths in custody in nineteen eighty-seven. And it is very disappointing that no significant actions have been taken since the Royal Commission into Aboriginal deaths ended in nineteen ninety-one. Like the Royal Commission held in nineteen ninety-one, we must deny, discuss the uncomfortable truth. About the injustice, the intolerance, the inequity and the prejudice that exists in our society. Towards many of our Indigenous people. Our justice system has let them down. As Any Barbara said, our policing and correctional system has failed them. The government must act and must act quickly to remedy this situation. It must correct the past wrongs and injustices faced by our Indigenous people. That is why I will support this notice of motion because black lives matter, friends. I refuse to believe that the bank of justice is bankrupt. Or that the vaults of opportunity for change is empty. Our Indigenous people are not yet freed from the bonds of injustice. Our Indigenous people have one of the highest rates of incarceration in Australia. Since nineteen eighty-nine, the imprisonment rate of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people has increased twelve times faster than the rate of non-Arboresian people. In December twenty nineteen, the rate was two thousand five hundred and thirty-six prisoners for a hundred thousand adult Aboriginal population compared to. Two hundred and eighteen prisoners for a hundred thousand non-Arboresian population. Now, the disproportionate numbers are obvious here. Aboriginal deaths in custody were four hundred and thirty-four since nineteen ninety-one. Although Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander adults make up around two percent of the national population. They constitute twenty-seven percent of the national prison population. In twenty sixteen, around twenty in every thousand Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people were incarcerated. Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander women constitute thirty-four percent of the female prison population. I think I made my point, I pointed out. The cross, the disproportionate numbers that points to the overrepresentation of our Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people. In the criminal justice system, it is Mister Mayor, a national disgrace. And we as a society must take immediate action to correct these disproportionate figures. Now, there are many reasons that commission gave, but part of it was the economic position of our Indigenous people, the health situation, the housing requirements, the access. Or I should say non-access to an economic base including land and employment, their situation in relation to education. Although these issues are being addressed now, that are closing the gap campaigns, we hope it'll have a positive influence on our community. To any fair minded person, however, it is obvious that Indigenous people do not have the same opportunities in this country. As non-Indigenous people. Councillors, members of the public, where there is wrong, we have a duty to right it. Where there is injustice, we have a duty to correct it. Where there is suffering, we have a duty to stop it. Where there is discord, we should create harmony and where there is despair, we must offer hope. Here is a great opportunity to offer hope, that's what this motion offers hope. And I value the contribution of, in particular councillor Nielsen, who, who belongs to a party. Who espouses and embraces equity and social justice and a fair go for all. And her core values and beliefs came through tonight. Unless we address this issue, councillors, of black deaths in custody. And the disproportionate number of Indigenous people incarceration on this thirtieth anniversary with honesty. Where we'll find that where there is no justice, there'll be no peace. This country, Mister Mayor, with all its hopes and boasts of giving people a fair go, will not be true to itself. Or a true democracy, until all citizens, including our Indigenous people, both Indigenous and non-Indigenous people. Are given the same opportunities, protections and freedoms, thank you Mister Mayor.
Councillor Bowen?
Thank you, I'll just be very quick, um, councillors, uh, firstly, I'd like to congratulate councillor Mattson. For, um, putting this motion up, I think it's a really, uh, vitally important motion. I'd like to thank Any Barb coming up to speak and as usual, uh, uh, eliminating the issue from her, uh, direct experience. And I'd like to thank the councillors in the debate for their contribution. And I, it just occurred to me, listening to Any Barb, listening to the debate, of how important it is for this council going into the future. And of course, we've got a council election later this year and the council will change. And for those councillors that are here into the next term, I think it's just so important we remember a couple of basic things. About our connection with our local Indigenous community. This issue of, um, uh, deaths in custody i- is an issue of justice and from our Indigenous communities, uh, perception. It's, it's a matter of injustice, but in fact, it's not thirty years, it's two hundred and thirty years of a, a feeling of profound injustice. And that story, uh, right or wrong, commenced in the Randwick City Council area. When the English sailed into Port Botany, uh, Botany Bay as it was then known, back in seventeen eighty-eight. And that was the beginning of the, um, assault, uh, on our Indigenous community, uh, in this area. And that community has survived, uh, um, from sixty thousand years to now. And, and we have that wonderful, um, uh, influence in our, our, our community. And we must always as a council, I believe for that reason, for that, yeah, historical connection. We have an obligation above all other councils, uh, above any body of government, I would suggest. Um, to our local community to always be at the forefront of trying to bridge that injustice. That's what we must always do in this place and this is a, a really good example of that. So I'd just like to thank, uh, everyone and, uh, I look forward to the council endorsing this motion.
Councillor Bowen, any further speakers? So councillors, I'll put it, all those in favour say aye. Those against, I declare that unanimous. Um, the last one is N M twenty-seven slash twenty-one, that's the motion for councillor Beach, Heffernan Gymnastics Facility committee stakeholder.
This is a procedural matter, Mister Mayor, um, if I can declare the same interests I did with the plan and management. So for an opportunity, nice certificate interest, I will be voting on the matter, I'm a member of the South Sydney, um, River Lakes Football Club and also know a number of, um. Persons from the gymnastics associations. Probably live in the city of Randwick.
City Mayor, councillor Beach, uh, do I have a second? Councillor Mattson or a second?
Uh, thank you Mister Mayor, um, actually this, this motion has not to do, uh, with the NRL club. Uh, that's proposing to have a, a centre, this is purely about the, the gymnastics. Um, we heard from one of our highly accomplished and brave, um, gymnasts who came here today. It's a very challenging, uh, and difficult sport. Um, and we've had, we've been fortunate in this LGA to, to, uh, to actually host, to, to have, uh. Members of this community, members of this sport, uh, participating here right in our, in our LGA. It's a terrific sport, it's an, it's an Olympic sport and it's something, uh, that we've always held out the promise of, of increasing, uh, and improving. The facilities which, but by any measure, uh, in a very poor state for anyone who's been down there. Um, anyone would agree, I, I, I believe that, um, they are in dire need of an upgrade. Um, as I've mentioned before, uh, because this club has been around for so long, this centre. Um, there have literally been thousands of young gymnasts who have, who have gone through, most have gone through their entire, uh, involvement in this, in the sport. Uh, in what is an extremely substandard, uh, facility. But they put up with it, uh, in the belief and in the hope, uh, that in, in future years, hopefully sooner rather than later. Um, council would, would recognise, uh, this sport and. council would recognise this sport and their contribution and the fact that it is, at this stage, primarily eighty-five percent female membership. Eighty-five percent female membership. This is significant. This is something we need to stand up for as a community because I do fear that if we don't actually pause now, now, this is not asking for any deferral. This is asking for more information to be brought to council, to be made public to the community. I think if we proceed and don't actually take the time to look at this properly, that this is going to send a very bad message to the young female athletes in our community. There are around a thousand members participating in this sport at the gymnastics centre. Therefore, an eighty-five percent, that's about eight hundred and fifty young girls, young women. And the message that is going to be coming from this council is we're not actually even going to spend another month having a look, just taking that bit of extra time. We're not deferring anything. We're not delaying anything. But we're going to listen to your concerns. And isn't that what a lot of the debate has been about in the media in recent months? People are saying, please listen to me. Now, that doesn't just apply to, you know, cases of harassment and abuse. We need to be showing our young women, our young girls, that when they speak up, someone is going to listen to them. Someone is going to listen to them. Because if they're just speaking up about a sporting facility and they are being shut down, they are being told by the councillors, no, we want to just go ahead. We believe that a predominantly male sport should be given a fourteen thousand square metre showcase field and a centre of excellence. But actually, if you're asking for a centre of excellence, you're speaking out of line.
Councillor De Rocha and councillor Andrews, please.
It's simply a matter of numbers, simply on the numbers. Can I speak? Can I have my little five minutes? Can I have my five minutes?
Councillor De Rocha, please. Go ahead.
So this is simply asking for the information to be brought to council that was never put to the community up until October last year, September last year, when it went on the DA. Not many people would have seen that DA. It certainly didn't come out when we were putting our Randwick City Plan on exhibition. It certainly didn't, and the plans didn't come out in twenty seventeen when they were first being formed. And there's, I found a report from the Operate twenty seventeen eighteen operational plan, which said that there were plans being made. So we had opportunities to actually speak the truth and say, look, this is what we're putting out. What do you think? This is the role of council. Let's have to be upfront.
That's five minutes. And that's including the time they took away from you.
So I urge you to support this motion. I do ask for your support. Thank you.
Councillor Mattson is second.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I'd just like to highlight to the councillors that on Saturday, I opened the season launch for the netball at Heffron Park. So a hundred metres away from the actual gymnastics centre, there's five thousand young girls and women who play every Saturday. So council does, well, we were told that we don't help female sports, so there's five thousand women every weekend. Councillor Mattson?
I had my say some meetings ago on the question of the consents for the two DAs we then had. They were, those consents were subsequently granted by the planning panel. And I stated to a journalist that asked me how I viewed it. I said that was the resolution of the council and that as a councillor, I own that resolution and that I am behind the present development project as it is. And I hope that it will be delivered on time. And I consulted very closely with councillor Veach as she drafted her motion. And I went through it painstakingly to assure myself that if I did support it, it would in no way hint or suggest any possible delay to the resolution of this council as to what form that we have agreed on for the product, for the final outcome. Essentially, this mirrors the motion that I put some meetings ago now, and which I suggested that at a future date, there might be an opportunity to revisit when all the consents were finished with, when the tenders were finished with, with the actual building was finished with. I think it's in the spirit of that. I think that this is a councillor who's doing her best to respond to approaches from the community. And I would ask you to give consideration to it.
Councillor De Souza, do you just want to?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, over the last three months, this council has vigorously debated the merits of the Heffron In-North Sports Centre. And I truly believe that no stone has been unturned. And our council staff have been transparent in providing every single councillor with the information requested to make an informed decision relating to this project. Yet we have councillors in this chamber tonight who still question the entire project. And we have heard on no less than five occasions that if council continues to delay work relating to the Heffron Sports Centre, then we risk losing the twenty-three million in funding being provided by the state and federal governments. The questions being posed by the councillor tonight could easily be subject to opinion. Some may argue that thirteen hundred square metres is adequate for a gym. Yet others will argue that it isn't. But what we need to remember here tonight is that this facility is a community facility and will not only be utilised by gymnastics, but other sporting groups. And as I've said in the past, there are over ninety sporting groups representing twenty different codes who use Heffron Park. And I'm sure that each and every one of these groups wants more space and more equipment for their code. But what we need to ask is which sporting code or group will miss out if we increase the footprint for gymnastics? Now, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you to tell the public, audience, not to interfere while I'm talking?
Councillor, please refrain from interrupting.
It should also be noted, Mr. Mayor, that female participation in sport in New South, or in Australia, goes in this order: netball, soccer, basketball, gymnastics, then swimming. Does that mean now that we have to prioritise the space based on that? I should hope not. Now, council is also in receipt of a letter that we received here today from Gymnastics New South Wales, the president, Carol Mills. And it should be noted that in this letter that we received here today, I want to quote some of the quotes that were made by Ms. Mills. "The Heffron master plan is truly visionary and the facilities developed to date have been outstanding." "Council's long-term commitment to gymnastics' ongoing presence within the precinct is greatly appreciated and has been a vital part of our vision for the sport in New South Wales." And further, "Council's significant investment into the sport and your welcome assurance is that the tender will require the delivery of a competitive programme through to level ten provides a clear and reassuring signal that council is committed to continuing our growing sport, especially given its high rate of children's and female participation." We have the endorsement here tonight of Gymnastics New South Wales, the president of Gymnastics New South Wales. What that tells me, Mr. Mayor, is that if Gymnastics New South Wales are satisfied with what council is providing, then what more do we need? What more do we need? And if this facility isn't adequate, then we won't have anybody tendering for the process later on, will we? I want to see the result outcome later on to see exactly where we stand with this. I really want to, I really want to see that because if thirteen hundred square metres isn't adequate, then no one would be tendering for it. So if Gymnastics New South Wales, Mr. Mayor, has no problem with this facility, then there shouldn't be any question about the size of the facility. Do we risk losing the entire project to a P S one group? I should hope not. And on that note, I can't support this motion tonight because as a councillor, I need to consider the entire need of our community and not just the needs of one particular group. This motion would jeopardise that project, and I'm not prepared to do that. Thank you.
It was actually councillor De Souza, not councillor Bowen? Councillor Bowen?
Yeah, I won't be supporting the motion either. And I have some concerns about the premise for the motion. And the reference to obtaining an independent expert advice. And in particular, the reference to independence. Our role as councillors is to oversee the operations of the council. And if we have concerns about a lack of independence, that's part of our role is to take it up within the council. And there are other statutory features in relation to that. It's not the role of the council, I believe, to form an opinion that that our own staff or our own processes have been lacking on the council floor, and I don't accept that they have, by the way, so that we go get independent expert advice. And I wonder in this context what independent expert advice might be. But of course, we have, if I was too supportive of that concept that independent expert advice was required in this instance, which I'm not, because this matter has been debated at length. And a lot of the arguments that have been put up until now have found to be wanting, quite frankly. But if I was to entertain the idea of obtaining expert advice, who would I go to? What sort of advice would I receive? And we have it to hand. We have the correspondence from Gymnastics New South Wales. And if they're not an expert in this field, I don't know who is. And they are wholly endorsing council's project. So the motion itself, I would say, on that basis alone, even though I think it's ill-founded, is entirely unnecessary because we have the advice and the advice is telling us that it's supportive of the concept. I might add one final point. I'm completely sympathetic, well, sorry, two things. Firstly, I don't accept the idea that gymnastics is exclusively for girls or women and vice versa. I have not enjoyed listening at all to the debate being phrased as one type of sport versus another. Each of those sports have their positives and minuses. But plenty of boys, my own sons included, have participated in gymnastics and team sports. And I'm sure there's multiple people in our area in the same situation. So, but having said that, I'm sympathetic and I understand that everyone, of course, who has an interest in a particular community activity always wants the best. And of course, the gymnastic community is no different from the rugby league community or any other sporting group or any other type of community group, whether they be, you know, poets or creative writing or whatever it is. Of course, you would want the best. And anyone who's been at this council understands that there is a vast reservoir of demand on council resources. And the council can't do it all. It has to constrain its commitments and try, and we may not always succeed. But we try as best as we can to share what we have, which is limited. And my concern would be that with this ongoing dissatisfaction, which whilst it might be expressed as a sort of saying that there is a better outcome available, that comes at a far greater price, but also risks jeopardising the whole concept, everything. And that is just not a risk that we can entertain with the project as advanced as it is for Heffron Park, as longstanding as it has been. And in circumstances where I believe there will still be a far better outcome for the gymnastic community with what is proposed. So those are the sort of factors that are influencing my thinking. But just returning to this motion, I won't support it. I can't support it. I believe it's ill-founded. And I believe we have the expert advice that tells us that the council is on the right track.
Councillor Bowen, councillor De Souza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You might think my request to build a new gymnastics centre and to give the opportunity to manage it, that it be given to Banarong Gymnastics is best.
Councillor De Souza, you might jeopardise a tender if you actually mention their name or mention any costs. You can't, you're not allowed to say that.
Thank you. Sorry, I will correct myself. I take that back and anything else you want, Mayor. You may think my request to build a new gymnastics centre and give the opportunity to manage it to a group, I know, is based on emotion rather than facts and evidence. That is not true. From the documents I have seen and read over the past ten years, there appears little doubt that the council was going to build a functional gymnastics centre for a very deserving group of young athletes. It also appears from what I've read and heard, council was going to co-partner a particular group to replace the old rundown building with a bigger, better, more functional facility, using their expertise and entertain the gymnastics association's requests. One phrase, councillors, you will hear many times tonight, is equity and justice. That's what this decision we will be addressing tonight is all about. Equity, justice, and that Australian value of a fair go for all. Yes, a fair go for young athletes who are mostly women, as we've been told. The council wants to dismantle the old gymnasium and replace it with a new building. The council, in its view, only wants to build a new facility to replace the old. But by doing this, they're taking away more than that. More than an old rundown building, so much more. My friends, you can acquire a building, but you can't acquire a home or a family. Because a home and a family is not built of bricks and mortar, but love and memories, lots of memories. You can't pay for it even. Put a quantum value on it. You're only shortchanging the people concerned if you try. I can't speak for those who wrote the document that I read, but I'll bet you, when they wrote the document and drew up the plans for the new gymnastics centre, they wanted to put in the statement to build a facility that would contribute to building a sense of community on just and fair terms. They hope to stop anyone shortchanging someone like a local group and the young gymnasts whose talents it nurtures and protects. As I said earlier, we pride ourselves on our high care values, integrity, customer focus, accountability, respect, and excellence. Well, when we vote tonight, let's keep that in mind. Now, I don't always share the common views with the councillors with this motion. And I disagree on some of the points and her excessive use of gender equity or about women representation. I once was accused of being a misogynist, which was totally false and proven false. So I don't get into those debates anymore. But I know, and I'll end on a very simpler thought. I was at the Metromall Hotel the other day and I ordered a pepper steak. The waitress took my order and came back with a steak, a medium rare.
Councillor De Souza, can we please stick to the topic?
It is very, very, very relevant, Mr. Mayor. But the simplicity of what I was going to say was I didn't get what I ordered. I got something else and then I was told, well, still steak. It wasn't medium rare, but still steak. That's what we're saying to these people. We're building your facility. It's still a facility, but it's not functional. It's not what they asked for. It's not, that's what we need. I'll leave it at that. I think in a simplistic way, maybe I can expose the deficiency that exists in this whole matter.
Can I just elaborate on the deficiency?
I said that the
You had your hand up. Councillor saying?
Whatever you want. I'm at the mercy of the mayors.
I think you're making us hungry, councillor De Souza, for talking about food. Mr. Mayor, there's no other project that's taken so much of my time the last few years except for this one. And I want to thank the general manager and the director of city services for holding that online briefing on last Thursday that gave me more information. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Kim Rosen for writing to me, giving me all the information and having that conversation with me. And I thank you very much, all of you. The reason I asked for all this information is important because I because I want to come to a decision. I want to make an informed decision, not based on emotion, not based on any pressure or anywhere. Tonight, this motion before us by the deputy mayor is an important motion. And this motion per se, by itself, there's nothing wrong. However, looking further, I question, I question, what's the objective of getting this expert advice, if we don't like the word independent? What are we going to do with that, the information? My understanding is that if this extra information is not going to influence the outcome of the size of these gymnastic facilities that has been proposed before us, which is $1,300? Sorry, $1,300 square metres? What did I say? Dollars? $1,300 square metres? It's getting late. Why are we going out to get a report on this? Is this for the purpose of making us feel comfortable? Or, I don't know, to vindicate your position, to say the council has done the wrong thing? I would support this motion if you could guarantee me that it would affect the outcome of what we've already been proposed, that it could become 2,000 square metres instead of 1,300 square metres. My understanding is that it's too late now. We could not do any more changes because it would jeopardise the funding from the state and federal government. As I understand, we are about one year late. So unfortunately, I would not be supporting this motion before us based on what I've just said just now, unless the mover and the second term, Madam Deputy Mayor, could convince me that with this expert advice, and mind you, I believe we already had a independent advice many years ago from a consultant who recommended this 1,300 square metres. Now remember that council has limited resources. We don't have a bottomless pit of money. We get competing interests. We've got different sporting organisations knocking on our door and say, "hey, we want this, this and that." At the end of the day, we're trying to please and to meet the objectives or the requests from all stakeholders. But we cannot meet the wish list, you like, from our stakeholders. Sure, it would be fantastic. It would be fantastic if we could provide even 3,000 square metres of space. That would be in a perfect world, but we don't live in a perfect world. We live in a world where there are competing interests and where there are limited resources. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
So councillors, to close the debate, councillor, the deputy mayor, councillor De Souza.
Thank you. Councillors, I've spent a lot of time reading through the old reports, wording this very carefully, consulting with my Greens colleagues on the wording of this motion. It was very carefully worded to avoid any reference or intention to defer the project. In going through those old reports, what I could see is that there are actually many, many reports, merrill minutes, public reports, confidential reports about the High Performance Centre. But actually, there's actually almost no publicly available information in this last six years about either the gymnastics centre or the multi-sport centre. I've gone back through them all and they pretty much all refer to the High Performance Centre. So the community has not had the opportunity to look at those details. The first time the details were made public were on the DA, on the council DA website. This is why we're here now. We have actually had opportunities over all these years. In the previous term, different councillors, different staff, and for whatever reason, the community who has been there much for a very long time, for decades, they are an important stakeholder by any measure and a really significant stakeholder. And now at this point in time, they're raising their hand, they're saying, "please hear us out, please give us a chance" to put forward, to get some advice. And from looking at different reports, you could see that, and without going into details because they were confidential reports, I won't say the details, but what I feel I can say is that both the multipurpose, there was a lot more detail giving different models and different business cases being put forward for the multi-sport and for the High Performance Centre. But the detail around the gymnastics centre was lacking in the same detail. So this is not delaying or deferring anything. I mean, if nothing else councillors, if nothing else, if we got a chance to do this, maybe, even if we cannot get the funding, and unfortunately, the gymnastics is not fortunate like the NRL and attracting, you know, millions and millions of dollars in public funding. You know, I agree, it would be fantastic. It isn't necessarily the role of council. But they're not getting those millions of dollars. In fact, the local community was happy to have put as much in as the local NRL club was. They're offering to put up the same amount as the NRL club, as an actual fact. So, you know, maybe there's an opportunity even within the design, even if nothing has changed, can we design that southern wall which faces Jersey Road? And I've spoken to the staff and said, could that one wall be even designed in a way where at a later date, when more funding perhaps becomes available and the demand for places increases, that we could actually, in theory, design it? So it could be built at a later date without interrupting? You know, could that one wall, where it can extend southward towards Jersey Road, be built in a way, designed in a way, so it could be extended without interrupting the gymnastics programmes at the most least cost?
Your board of plies. Councillor De Souza?
I'm waiting to be requested.
Yep.
Two people can't be sending it, so you should know, you're a former mayor. Mr Mayor, my point of no new information should be brought into debate when it's been closed. This wall, et cetera, wasn't mentioned earlier. So let's close it, let's move forward, please. Otherwise, we're going to be here all night. Make the decision. I'm happy.
Mr Councillor?
I was responding to councillor Seem, actually. I was responding to councillor Seem. That's all, that's all. So this is a compromised position. I'm trying to just put it out there in the debate for consideration. I've been trying to find ways through this that everyone can agree to. And that's why, if we have this report, maybe that can inform some future plans. Maybe that can inform the current plan because actually, the gymnastics component of the facility, the design isn't actually complete. So maybe at no other cost to council, there can be considerations in the design. And this can be used to inform it. It is not delaying anything. And it gives a message of hope to the young gymnasts in our community, all 1,000 of them, male and female, and their families. That's a significant amount of people, councillors. It is sending them a message. We're going to listen to you. We're not delaying anything.
Deputy Mayor Beach, that's the time, because we included the extra for the interruption. Thank you. So councillors, I'll put it. All those in favour, say aye. Against? I declare that carried. Councillors, lost, sorry, lost, lost, lost. Councillors, it's now 9:10. If we can come back by 9:25, please be on time. Thank you.
We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 15 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 15 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return in approximately 14 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return in approximately 14 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return in approximately 13 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return in approximately 13 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 12 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 12 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 11 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 11 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 10 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 10 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 9 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 9 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 8 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 8 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 7 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 7 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 6 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 6 minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately 5 minutes. We expect to return within approximately five minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately five minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately four minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately four minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately three minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately three minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately two minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately two minutes. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return within approximately one minute. We are currently taking a break. We expect to return shortly.
So councillors, I'll put to you, I'll do with the mayor of minutes first. I'll commend to you MM eight slash twenty-one financial support. There's an additional councillor Roberts, I'll just let you know, there's an additional financial support for South Coogee Public School for $600 to waiver fees, so you might have to do a declaration. So I'll do that now, see if you want to announce your declaration.
Yeah, I'll declare an interest in that matter. Two children go to that school.
Thank you.
But I'm not a member of any executive of any PNC or anything, so I'll vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, he's not a member of the state, so. So councillors, I commend to you MM eight slash twenty-one financial support and donations. All those in favour say aye, all those against say no, declare that carried. MM nine twenty-one, the, I've had an amendment. Yeah, I've just amended mine, I've just got one little amendment and I'll go straight to it. I just have an amendment on that one, sorry councillors, just one sec. So Mr Kelly, in point A, can I just remove beach to be made a marine reserve and just replace with community consultation on a ban on spearfishing at Little Bay Beach? Yeah, so, yeah, so we'll take out marine reserve. It's not recreational, it's spearfishing. And that's it. And so councillor, yes, so councillor Shuri.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I wanted to ask you if you would include flight boards in, as well as jet skis at Marabah.
Foil boards, councillor Shuri?
They're also called foil, but they're also called flight. I Google. They have caused a lot of prob, we haven't actually had them here yet. They have caused a lot of problems in the northern beaches because when you go up high, you can't actually see swimmers. So they have caused, you know, I don't know if they've actually caused a death, yeah. They're in Maruba, are they? Yeah, but they're, they go really fast, you know, and they can't see swimmers, so. A motorised surfboard. Yes, there is an engine. It's electric. And they go, they go quite fast councillor.
I accept that amendment. So councillors, can we vote on it? All those in favour say aye. Against, declare that carried. Oh, the school, oh, did you go there too? No. Sorry.
My children went to South Coogee for many years, up until fairly recently, and I know, still know quite a lot of people at that school, however, it's a non-significant, non pecuniary interest and I will be voting.
But actually councillors, there's an extra mayor of minute on your desk, MM ten slash twenty-one, can I ask councillor Roberts and councillor Hamilton to leave the room please?
Again, bye-bye.
Don't go far. So councillor, the Sydney City Eastern Planning Panel meets on the 29th of April and councillor Hamilton and councillor Roberts will represent the council. This is only the beginning process, a lot of people think the decision is being made on the 29th of April, a lot of the residents. So I just want to inform through our social media challenges, that channels, sorry, that the decision is a monthly process and what will happen through that decision will be posted on our social media networks. So I put this to you, all those in favour say aye. Against, declare that carried, then come back in. So MM one eleven slash twenty-one, South Coogee Public School colour run, fee waiver for Snake Park, you can see it there, it's only $649, all those in favour say aye. Those against, declare that carried.
Is the mayor going to run in that?
I don't want to shame those kids, I'll be straight through. Now we'll move to Inseriatum.
Mr Mayor, just as a point of clarification, just in line with what we've discussed, there was a circulated schedule proposed for, to adjourn and just to do it in one motion, having observed the last bit of the meeting, I've made the decision not to do that. And I think that I'll leave it to individual councillors to decide what is appropriate to defer and not to defer, in light of the fact that I'm not confident that we would be able to come to a consensus or a clean majority decision on this particular way in a non-acrimonious manner.
So GM two slash twenty-one. Councillor Andrews. CP nineteen slash twenty-one. No challenge. Oh, we've. Oh, voting required, sorry, sorry. No, CP nineteen twenty-one, I said was unchallenged, but it's got two votings required, so I'll come back. Actually, is there any point challenging if we have to vote?
No, we just have to debate. It has to be challenged.
It's unanimous, if there's no challenge, it's gone through as unanimous. Now the unchallenged items become, they've won. Okay, so I'll just read them out. So we've done the local character, CP nineteen slash twenty-one. All those in favour? Oh, sorry. So can someone please move as per their recommendation? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Trevinos, all those in favour? If I need a division, can you show my hands? Do I need to read out names or call it? It's unanimous. CP twenty slash twenty-one, we have done. CP twenty-one slash twenty-one, can I have someone move it, councillor Hamilton? Yeah, so that's a recommendation. So as per recommendation, so councillor Hamilton, do I have a second, councillor Shuri? To speak, oh, yeah. Okay, so councillors, all those in favour say aye, raise your right hand, call that unanimous. CP, now we've done that, CP twenty-three slash twenty-one. Moved by councillor Parker, seconded councillor De Roshan. You have to leave, but don't go far, please Noel. Yeah, because it's a motion now, so councillor Parker's got the motion, you can debate the motion. Okay, so councillor Parker?
Look, thank you, Mr Mayor. I moved the recommendation on the business paper, I will withhold my comments, subject to the debate, which proceeds.
Oh, sorry councillor Parker, you finished or still speaking? So councillor De Roshan, you seconded?
Yeah, I just sit for the debate.
Okay, thank you. I would like to speak, councillor Rob. I would like to speak, councillor Rob.
I'd just like to congratulate the staff for their hard work putting this forward. And I note councillors in their support for especially developing the night time economy. It's very important that we, that we move forward with that, being a, you know, a coastal area that's close to the city, you know. It's important that we have a functional night time economy, but also, but more in general. More in general that we, that we move forward with the economy, make things possible for people to, you know, get through. There's a few small points in here that I've got a little, some issues with, but I suppose I won't move amendments or anything. I might address them during the public consultation phase. I have concerns about 90 days for unhosted short term rentals, I think that's on the low side. It's a bit of an impost into people's property development rights. Notwithstanding there is a balance to be had between community amenity and property rights, but I think 90 days is just, just a quarter of the year. I think maybe we could push up to thirty, a third of the year, which would be 120 days. But, but yeah, and back to, if you look on page 369, there's, you know, it's great to see small scale cultural activities as exempt development. I think that's fantastic. So congratulations to the staff, to the committee, you know, I think councillor Park was on the committee, other councillors. Councillor Savreinos, yeah, councillor Beach, so it was all great. Now, there's, there's a lot of points here that, you know, we, we bring this in, but then we kill it with all the regulations. And there's, there's a whole page of dot points where you sort of, you can but you can't. So I'm not going to move any amendments tonight, but, but I think 10pm as a, as a lock off is too early, you know, maybe 11, you know, 11 is not late. What's that? So there's, there's other, other issues as well. Twenty six days in a year. Twenty six days in a year, like, that's seven percent. Like, why, why even let these people do it if they're going to do it seven percent of the time? So there's a few issues here. I'd just like to flag it and look forward to, you know, discussing it more after community consultation.
So councillors, councillor Parker, do you want to speak on it?
I close the debate, I've no further comments.
So I'll put it, all those in favour say aye. Against, oh, sorry, raise your hands, sorry, raise your hands. Call that unanimous, councillor, just coming in now. So councillors, we go back to Inseriatum again. So CP, CP twenty one slash, CP twenty four slash twenty one. Councillor Shuri? It's already been done. CP twenty five slash twenty one, unchallenged. CP twenty six slash twenty one. Councillor Beach? CP twenty seven slash twenty one, unchallenged. CS ten slash twenty one. Unchallenged. Oh, sorry. Who, councillor Laxton? Oh, no, it's Trevinos. CS eleven, we've done. CS twelve slash twenty one. Councillor Andrews. CS thirteen slash twenty one, unchallenged. CS fourteen slash twenty one, unchallenged. We've done that. CS sixteen slash twenty one, unchallenged. No, we did the draft transport. Not, we're on to sixteen, the pedestrian crossing. Okay, CS seventeen slash twenty one, unchallenged. CO sixteen slash twenty one, unchallenged. CO seventeen slash twenty one, unchallenged. CO eighteen slash twenty one. CO nineteen slash twenty one. Unchallenged. Councillor Andrews has moved the unchallenged items, and councillor Laxton has seconded them. So we'll go from the beginning, the first one, councillor Andrews, GM two slash twenty one.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I, I moved the recommendation before us on the business paper. Once again, Mr Mayor, I congratulate yourself and the staff in putting this budget together. It's been a tough 12 months with Covid, but council still has a budget which we should be proud of, with a surplus of $3.706 million. I'd like to highlight that the capital works programmes of this council are going to continue in the next financial year. Obviously, the big ticket item is the construction of the Heffron Centre. This centre will provide new state of the art community sporting facility, including a new gymnastics centre and an indoor multipurpose centre, with the South Sydney Rabbit's High Performance Centre also been included in this project. Other highlights are new outdoor gyms in Snake Park and Barwin Park, a new synthetic field in Coral Sea Park, the upgrade of Fitzpatrick Park, and new amenities at Malabar Pool and Dunningham Reserve. And very exciting, Mr Mayor, and this is one of my promises to my community, was a new splash park at Des Renford Leisure Centre. Once again, Mr Mayor, I've delivered on my promises from four years ago, was to, I deliver for our community a new splash park at Des Renford Aquatic Centre. So, Mr Mayor, I, I put the recommendation.
Councillors, when, when someone's speaking, can we please?
I put the recommendation to council once again. I congratulate the staff in their job in putting this budget together in tough times.
Councillor Hamilton, a second.
I reserve my right, thank you.
Councillor Shuri?
I would just like to, under the operational plan key activities themed to a sense of community, I just wanted to add another dot point, that's on page seven. Yes, of the business paper. Provide a range of programmes and activities for aged appropriate. Okay, go. Provide a range of aged appropriate programmes and activities. I bear in mind that we've actually, we're looking after.
I'm just trying to find the right spot, so is that, so is that in one of the things?
Yeah, I want to, I want an extra point.
Think two, yeah?
And I don't know whether. Can I add that in?
Can I just refer to the?
Yes, sure.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the page you're referring to is a, is a staff report. The document that you would be looking to amend is, is the document that would be going out on exhibition.
Right, it, it isn't.
This is only the draft.
Yeah. I just think we should kind of.
You can do it.
Be, be aware that, you know, we're actually putting down indigenous people, cowled people, you know, cowled programmes, but where I think it's really important to take account of our very old and our young as, as well. So I don't know, quite know where to do it, and I'm sorry, Mayor.
Councillor Shuri could simply move that the draft document to be placed on exhibition will include an extra theme two as appropriate with the wordage.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr Mayor, as I said before, the relevant inclusion would be within the operational plan itself, which goes out on a public exhibition, as opposed to the staff report that's provided to you as a councillor. So the, the motion does have a dot point C saying the general manager be authorised to make any minor changes. Can I suggest that, that we discuss those, those inclusions prior to it going out on exhibition?
If councillor Shuri were to put the amendment, say for example, on page thirty four or thirty five of the report? Or similar, would that be the appropriate spot? Potentially? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Singh? No, councillor Singh says.
All good? Sorry, I've just got a question. To the appropriate, Mr Greatburn? Or the general manager, or the director of city services? This is about the Heffron Centre. Given that this is the most expensive capital worth ever undertaken by this council, am I right? Do we have a risk management strategy in place to make sure that we won't face a situation of cost overrun? What kind, oh really, what kind of contracts are we having? Do we have a cost plus? A fixed cost? Well, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm not, I'm not a builder, but this is what I've been asking a builder. I say, how do we minimise the risk? Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Council's project control group responsible for the delivery of the project has many risk mitigation strategies in place, ranging originally from the agreement for lease and licence, which stipulated how we manage the contract and partnership in the, in the Centre of Excellence with the, with the funding partners. And then there's also several funding strategies by way of the contract that we're utilising for construction, the design and construct contract, which is a financial risk mitigation contract in itself, with a shared responsibility between council and a builder. But then we also have a risk mitigation strategy in place. We have a quantity surveyor on board from project conception, and we are getting that quantity surveying, or quantity surveyors work tested or peer reviewed from another independent in the market to assure that our contingencies and our allowances today are standing up to, to, to market practice as we move into construction. And then construction will have the required contingencies should variations or unforeseen latent conditions take place. So from inception to cradle to grave, we have an extended risk mitigation strategy for finance.
I just have a follow on question from councillor Singh's question. Now, I understood from one of the previous reports that there was a 20% buffer for the High Performance Centre. Was there also a 24%, a 20% or any kind of buffer included in the gymnastics? And multi-sport, given that we went to the community to borrow from the bank, we went to the bank and so on. So was there also a buffer for that?
The director can answer it, so.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Beach, you are correct that the 20% buffer that you're referring to was in regards to the Centre of Excellence and the, and the public private partnership agreement for lease and licence. However, we do have a level of contingency that is industry best practice for the entire project. So design contingency, a construction contingency that is incorporated into the project. At the moment, I think it's just shy of 20%, but it's not far off, but it's based off industry best practice. But there'll be a report that will come to councillor in, in the future stipulating all those percentages.
So as I'll put it, all those in favour say aye. Against, declare that carried. The next one is CP twenty four slash twenty one, councillor Shuri?
I would like to move this in amended fashion. I would like to add a point E. Bring back the policy for review within six months, taking into account the key stakeholders' concerns. You will remember, councillors, that we, when we went to, to, out to the budget increase, we actually included a women's refuge in the reasons for that budget increase. And, oh, rate increase, sorry. And all councillors were totally on board with any mitigation for domestic violence. It, it was discovered that it was far too expensive for us to even contemplate running our own council refuge. So this transitional housing policy was brought in to help with the situation in, in a way that council could afford. Bearing in mind that we had gone to the community asking for money for domestic violence mitigation, and they had overwhelmingly supported us. So there are, we are changing some things tonight in that to help with temporary visa holders have, have some form of respite from domestic violence situations. But it doesn't go far enough. And that's why I'm asking for, before a review of the policy. Because this was written four years ago, and it was a new and total new realm for us. And there have, it's since been pointed out that there are a few problems with, with the provisions in it. So that's why I'm asking for it to, to be reviewed within six months. And I would like it to go through tonight, taking out the residents of Randwick Local Government Area and reference to the Australian citizens, because I don't want to stop the, the, you know, by trying to debate the whole policy tonight, it would take far too long. I think that I don't want to stop the chance, if there's someone in, in real trouble out there, that we are unable to help them because we're deferring the policy till, till later on. So that's, that's the reasoning for, for wanting to go through with it. But also understanding there are difficulties with it, and there are problems that have been pointed out by key stakeholders, which I'd like to take into account. So that's.
Deputy Mayor, councillor Beach? Oh, councillor Beach, she did about five minutes ago.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, thank you. I'm supporting the recommendation as in the business paper with the point E as elaborated by councillor Shuri. And I, I think that bringing the report back, sorry, bringing the the policy back within six months to just update it, check it's working fine with all the stakeholders seems to be a very reasonable way of proceeding forward. There might be some little points we need to tweak. It's a very important policy, and we want to make sure it's covering everybody that it's intended to cover, and that we're not excluding people for no other reason than we've got a, we've established a criteria that may not be as flexible as it should be. So I hope you all support this and we can move forward.
Councillor, I'll just go to councillor Rob, he's got a question, and I'll come back to councillor.
My question is, would this be subject to review anyway? And if so, what would be the period for that? And my second question is, what's staff's point of view on six months? Is that too short in terms of getting data to get a reasonable sort of review out of that?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Certainly, we would review policies generally along the five year timeframe. But I do note that with our affordable housing programme, and council's previously resolved to, to review our policies and programmes, given the potential increases in our portfolio of affordable housing dwellings through our, now inclusion in SEP 70 and the Affordable Housing SEP. So this will be an area where there will be additional council officers' consideration of the future options in relation to affordable housing and how it's managed. So from that point of view, it's probably, six months is probably suitable from that point of view. And certainly in this area, where it's very much driven by demand through domestic violence service providers. So we would certainly engage with those particular providers to see if we are meeting the needs of, of these victims.
Thank you, and, and thank you very much for the, for the, to the staff and councillor Shuri and all who've worked to increase council support, you know, all the councillors, in fact, over this term, to, to increase council support for survivors of domestic violence and their children. I fully support councillor Shuri's amendment. And the, the question was not so much, I think, about the, the housing model that was being put forward, which I think.
And the, the question was not so much, I think, about the, the housing model that was being put forward, which I think I fully support. It was to do with just some points regarding the eligibility criteria, and the fact that it may inadvertently exclude some women who may be fleeing, a, a, who may be at severe risk of, of, of domestic violence, of, of, of violence, and may may not have an income at that point in time. Or may have had to leave the Randwick LGA to, to, to go to another shelter or, or seek refuge. And so may not be residing in the LGA at the time of the application, even though they have a connection to it through previously residing or, or working or studying here. So they, they were the main points, but so that's why I think there is a need for a review. Thank you.
Councillor Beach, councillor Spiker.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I just have a quick query as to what exactly councillor Shuri is moving as it relates to the eligibility criteria. The report reads on page 426 on the business paper, however Australians is per, was basis, and it notes that it says to be a resident of the Randwick Local Government Area. Is it intended for that wording to be actually moved, or is it intended that it, that what it is is to have, to be a resident of the Randwick Local Government Area, or has previously been a resident of the Randwick Local Government Area prior to fleeing a domestic violence situation? The only reason why I want to clarify that particular point is the absence of crisis of accommodation, as we know, in this particular area. And so you could have somebody who's literally living on the other side of the road outside of the LGA, but had a longstanding connection and would be excluded under this particular criteria. And I just want to clarify as to whether or not we are moving it exclusively as to the business paper, which in my interpretation would exclude that, or would to allow a former resident of the LGA who had done so prior to fleeing domestic violence.
As the way I see it, councillor, in the, in the policy, three eligibility criteria actually states that have previously lived in the LGA prior to leaving the home as a result.
I, I agree with you. There is an inconsistency there, and I'd just like that to be clarified, because it is of great significance as to the application of this. So through you, Mr Mayor, to the relevant officer. And i- i- if it is, in fact, the narrow interpretation, I'd just like to foreshadow an amendment to change that criteria.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. No, council would not, officers would not deem that to be a strict application. The intent behind the eligibility criteria is to, is to allow members of the community that have a connection with the Randwick Local Government Area, and we do appreciate the fact that people fleeing domestic violence situations and having to go to crisis accommodation in other local government areas would still be subject to this particular eligibility.
Yeah, ju- just for the, while, while I appreciate the answer from the, the director, just for the complete avoidance of doubt, I would just like to propose an amendment that the eligibility criteria, that a, a person be a resident of the Randwick Local Government Area, or has previously had a connection, or had been a, a resident of the Randwick Local Government Area prior to fleeing a domestic violence situation.
Shuri, I'll just make it official. You, you're happy with that? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Speak on it. I'll close, you'll close it. So councillors, we vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against, declare that carried. Unanimously. Councillor, and now we go to, now councillor, CP 26/29, the deputy mayor councillor Beach. Sorry, not 29, 21, sorry, 21.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to move this as it appears on the business papers. As the Chair of the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, this committee has put in a lot of work. That's including the, the staff and community members and councillors who have been on this committee. We've had a lot of input from the local arts and cultural community. And I, I, as with councillor Roberts in relation to the economic development, I believe that, you know, there may be, I'm sure there is scope for perhaps some slight amendments to the policy when we get the feedback from the community. And I, and I hope they can be well considered and, and, and adopted if, if, if necessary. So I'd like to thank the staff. This is, and actually the general manager, who, there have been some staff who've really championed this. It's close to my heart. And so I commend the report, and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Councillor Andrews is seconding it. Okay, so councillors, I'll put it. All those in favour say aye. Those against, declare that unanimous. CS 10/21, councillor Stravinos.
Miss Mill, I have a few questions in relation to this, and I want to direct it to the Director of City Services. At, well, look, I, I won't be supporting this motion, this report tonight. But I have a few questions that I do want to put to the Director of City Services. I want to know. I won't be supporting it. I won't be supporting it.
Foreshadow the motion, councillor. Okay.
All right, the question, the question I have is, in order to be effective, do the sharks have to be tagged so that they're, so that the drum line actually reports and records that the shark is there?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that is correct. The, the sharks are tagged and, and released. I, I do know that, based off the report, that, that New South Wales does have quite a successful shark tag and testing programme, so. But yes, the sharks need to be tagged.
If the shark's not tagged, it won't come up on the system. One of the methods, okay, all right. All right, look, at this stage, I'm fifty-fifty, but I'll sit down and I'll listen to.
Councillor Mattson, you're moving the, councillor Mattson, councillor Mattson, you're moving the motion? I just want to go to the mover of the motion, and I'll come back to councillor Shuri.
I'm happy to step aside and let councillor Shuri address.
Councillors, do you know the answer?
No, I just, what happens is that they, they don't have to be tagged before they hit the, the drum line. Is that what you're saying? They, they basically, when they've hit the drum line, the alarm goes off, and somebody goes out to the drum line, tags the shark and releases it. So.
Well, look, I was just, I was just a bit confused about how the whole system worked, and reading the report, it didn't really clarify it like that, so.
Hey, hey. Councillor Hamilton is seconding it. Do you want to say anything?
A bell goes off.
Councillor Hamilton is seconding it.
I reserve my right.
There's a right, anyone else like to speak? So councillors, I'll put it. Any, all those in favour say aye. Those against, I'll declare that unanimous. The next one is CS 12/21, councillor Andrews.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I move the recommendation on the business paper.
Councillor Stravinos is seconding it.
Victory Avenue, Randwick. Victory removal. Ask them how to be put. I reserve my right to speak, Mr Mayor. I'm trying to.
I reserve my right at this time to speak too, Mr Mayor.
May I ask a question to the relevant staff person? Through the general manager. Look, this is, the removal of significant trees has been the subject of a lot of discussion in the Greening Randwick Committee. And we've obviously had a lot of these reports come to council before. Council also has resolved to, to deliver a target of 40% tree canopy by 2040. That is quite a, a big task. It's going to cost a lot of money to plant all those trees. So actually, and actually part of that council resolution and the environment strategy was to maintain, maintain our existing trees. So what I would like to ask through, through the Chair is, given that there was no ability to install a root barrier on the council-owned footpath, because it was not wide enough, were the strata or the owners approached to consider council paying for a root barrier on the property? Because there's quite a large driveway and paved area out, out, out the front. I believe that if there had been a wider footpath, and there'd been the ability to install a root barrier on the council property, we would have probably paid for that. Is that something that was ever discussed with the, with the owners? If we could look at that possibility, given the, the need for, you know, to mitigate urban heat and retain and grow our canopy. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. It wouldn't be the professional advice of staff to construct a root barrier on a private property. Nor would it be feasible in many locations, given the, the extenuation of a root barrier around roots. It's not always possible with the foundation of properties, the internal foundations of houses and footings, to have success in that, in that nature.
Councillor Shuri?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In view of the fact that the tree that's being taken out is an extremely significant, large tree, I just have a question to you, Mr Director of City Services, whether it's possible to plant two Fiscus var Markoponia instead of just one?
I'd, I'd have to take it on notice, but I'd be more than happy to plant two, should it be, you know, as many trees, should it be physically possible within that, within that nature strip? But I dare say, given the request on, on the, on the recommendations on the paper, that that may be considered. I can take it on notice, and if we can feed a second tree, I'm more than happy to, to plant.
Okay, so can I then move it, recommendation with an amendment, that if possible, to yeah, council investigate the possibility of planting two, of a feasibility? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Can I also put in?
No, we want two big ones.
Okay, councillors, I'll put it. All those in favour.
Sorry, I just wanted to, well, I'm, sorry, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to add another recommendation, and that is that we ensure that any wildlife that is in the tree and in the environment, that's in the report? Great, thanks very much.
So councillors, I'll put it. All those in favour say aye. Those against, declare that unanimous. Oh, it's not unanimous, sorry. And please record councillor, the deputy mayor's name again.
Mr Mayor, I'm just a little bit uncomfortable you just saying unanimous, just because it's just, it's just, you don't hear any voices, it's not necessarily unanimous.
No, well councillor Beach corrected me, so it wasn't unanimous. If, if, if I yell out unanimous and it isn't, please correct me as I just did. I'm quite happy to repeat it. So we go straight to now, councillors, we go straight to NM 28/21. Notice the notice and councillor Beach, concerns regarding budget and management model of indoor. Councillor Beach, yeah. Do I have a, sorry?
I missed, I missed the start of the meeting. I make a declaration, as per my previous declarations, in, in regards to the Heffron Centre.
Mr Kelly, can you note that?
And do I have a second?
We are on councillor Beach's motion, are we?
Yes, yes, please.
Mr Mayor, I will second it for the purpose of all debate.
Okay, councillor Mattson seconded. Councillor Beach, go ahead.
Thank you, councillors. Look, as everyone knows, I've, you know, spent a lot of time, there has been a lot of discussion in the community about this project. I'd just like to raise some concerns about the, the budget. I, I hope that you would listen with an open mind. I guess the, the, I guess the essential issue is that we had two, two figures.
Councillors, can, when someone's speaking, please.
Figures for, at the outset of this project, which was at around 25 million for the High Performance Centre. That figure has not changed a dollar. And around $20 million for the indoor sports and gymnastics. That component has gone up by about $5.4 million. The issue is, councillors, I, I really hope you could listen to this, is that there's been no increase in scope in the indoor and gymnastics centre. So the bud, that original $20 million budget, which we, which was, I would, I hope, a reasonably accurate figure, because we went to a public consultation to borrow $27 million. I understand that not all of that money is going to this project, but it was one of the, the key projects that we went to quite a contentious public consultation and to borrow money, and a rate increase, and it went to IPART. That original $20 million was for two basketball courts, not one. So we had a budget of around $20 million for two basketball courts. And since that time, we still have two basketball courts, yet the cost of that has increased by approximately $5.4 million. This is simply what I'm trying to find out. I understand we did receive around $3 million for a, as a grant, which is fantastic. However, because it didn't actually deliver a third basketball court, that should have resulted in a surplus, not increased the budget. I understand that, you know, in around 2019, there was, you know, a report that stated that the, you know, that, you know, that due to inflation or whatever reason, the budget had gone up by around $2 million for the indoor sports and gymnastics. But as we've heard, there was a 20% contingency, at least for the Heffron, for the High Performance Centre. Any increase should have also been absorbed in the contingency for the gymnastics and multi-sport centre. In fact, that roughly $2 million increase at that time would have represented about 11% of the budget for the indoor sports and gymnastics, if you just applied it to that. And it would have represented about $5 million if you applied it to the total approximately $45 million cost as it was at that time. So the simple question is, why do we have a full, approximately $5.5 million increase when there has been no increase in scope for the indoor sports and gymnastics? And if there was an increase, why was it not absorbed by the 20%? Or maybe they only, maybe there was only a 10% contingency applied to the indoor sports and gymnastics. Why was it not absorbed? That is really the purpose of this motion. This is a big project. There's a lot invested in it by councillors and community, by different stakeholders. Councillors committed $3 million to the High Performance Centre. We, we need to know. So this is simply asking for some reports. We need to keep track of the cost apportionment between these different parts of this project. That, that's actually critical to maintain confidence. And we should be releasing reports, you know. There's been other big projects, I won't mention the light rail, but there are many calls for the business case for the light rail to be released to the public. As for many other infrastructure projects, and as time passes, those, those types of reports, those business cases should be made available for people to see. Councillors should be receiving quarterly updates. And it's, I, I don't believe it's correct to say that nothing has happened, so there was no need for us to have them at all over this last few years. In fact, there's been a lot of changes to the budget. And if those have been tabled, we have a bit more sense of where things were at. So I hope you can support this motion. Thank you.
Councillor Mattson is seconding it.
Look, I seconded this motion to allow for open and transparent debate. It has been an issue of some concern. My own personal view is that I know the general manager has distributed. My own personal view is that, I know the general manager has distributed a, a reply, which I read through. Um, the way I look at it, and I don't see myself as an in-depth financial analysis, but I accepted the general manager's assessment of the situation. But I was happy to um, second my colleague's motion because I, I think these things should be debated if a councillor feels they should be.
So sure.
I'm afraid I can't support this motion. Um, I've already told councillor Beech that I think if um, councillors have concerns over, over council spending, it should go to ARIK. That's our independent committee that looks at um, our finances and our financial spending. And I think that an item for the agenda for the next um, ARIK meeting should be um, the, the concerns of councillor Beech on, on the, the way that the budget is being handled. So that's what I consider should happen.
Yes, it's revenues.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, um, again, I want to put a question to the director of city services. What procurement processes and budgeting processes has council undertaken thus far to ensure that the costings relating to the Heffron Indoor Sports Centre run to budget and don't blow out?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council has engaged a quantity surveyor, uh, as mentioned earlier, from the inception um, of, of the project as per the uh, roles and responsibilities of the project control group. That quantity surveyor um, provides ongoing costing reports um, to the project control group at, at each milestone um, of, of the project. Uh, we're soon to be reaching the seventy percent milestone, which is the final design milestone of the project. We will again get an updated cost plan to ensure that the apportionment strategy um, has been adhered to. Um, but we're also going to get another quantity surveyor um, as part of a good process or good governance to get a peer review on our original quantity surveyor's work. So it's the project and its budget is tested at every design milestone in accordance with the council adopted budget. But we're also going to get that peer reviewed, um, which may form part of um, a future ARIK uh, report.
Um, Mr. Mayor, based on what the director of city services has put, put to us here tonight, I can't support this motion. Uh, what is clear is that council have undertaken a number of procurement and budgetary uh, measures uh, to ensure that this project doesn't blow out. I am also aware that there was a procurement advisor who uh, is part of this process and he's overseeing the contracts and the way this project is going to be put together. Uh, on that note, I have total faith in the processes and the system that this council has in place in relation to making sure that this project is on budget and is delivered on time. We cannot afford to continue playing games and having motions like this coming forward that are questioning the processes of this council. I have faith in the staff and in the management of this council to ensure that this project will be delivered on budget, on time, and we will not have any budget blowouts. I think that if we were to vote for this motion tonight, we are undermining the processes of this council. And I'm not about to do that. I have confidence and faith in our staff that this will be delivered on budget, on time, for the benefit of the community. And on that note, Mr. Mayor, look, uh, I just think that this is just going to be another stalling tactic. And I don't think it's right to approve it and go ahead with it.
So at point of order, I'd like councillor Staverinas to withdraw his statement that this is a game or a stalling tactic?
No, I won't be withdrawing it, Mr. Mayor.
It's a point of order.
Okay, and you don't have to. Councillor?
Uh, look, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will keep my comments brief in relation uh, to this particular section, as most of them I will go through uh, in the confidential section. Um, what I would like to actually say in the public section and to put on the record is that I do firmly support uh, the Heffron Centre and I, I do very much hope that it proceeds and hope that it is an excellent facility. Um, however, um, I, I do note that this is an imperfect uh, motion. But um, point B, i- in my view, has considerable attractiveness as to the rationale as to why council um, uh, has excluded, uh, well, on, on the current trajectory, it appears that it's excluded um, having a council-run facility for the community indoor multipurpose supporting facility. I will um, direct most of my comments to the confidential section, section in relation to that. Uh, in relation to point A, I've seen no evidence whatsoever that um, there has been um, uh, budget increases or changes to the scope of work or disputes around the cost apportionment. Um, and I am reasonably reassured in relation to that. And I do note that our staff have put a large amount of work uh, in, into that. And I have, I am very re- reassured. In relation to C, um, I have not identified any issues in, in relation to that. And in relation to D, um, I, I'm under the impression that that will begin shortly. Um, because the motion is bundled up into one, I'm faced with two choices. Either I vote uh, against the motion or I vote for the motion. Um, because there isn't a proposal to split it before us, I'm left with the uh, unenviable position of voting for the motion, uh, because I believe that it is important um, that there is a clear and unequivocal answer as to point B and the details as to why. I believe that is the case. I will leave for the confidential session.
Roberts.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting this motion either. Uh, I, I note that there are processes, professional processes in place that are managing this uh, large and complex project. And uh, with anything that's such, that anything that's large or complex as this, it's, it's to be expected that there may be variations in place. And uh, going through my own personal experience with our current DA, we're just putting a box on top of our semi, you know, and that has slid a little bit in terms of the costs involved in that. So if that happens and just for a box to be thrown on top of a three-bedroom semi, uh, you know, something like this, I think we need to be uh, completely cognizant of the reality of the potential for these sort of things. But the important thing is, are there processes in place? Are they professional? Absolutely, absolutely. And frankly, this, this motion is just outrageous. It's completely outrageous. It's a, it's an insult to the staff. It's an attack on the staff, what appears to be based political reasons only. The councillor should be, the councillor should be ashamed of this. And uh, and it's, and uh, like point D.
And yeah, I, I will agree with you councillor Mattson. Councillor Roberts, please just stick to the, no emotive language, please.
Point D is nothing more than micro-management of uh, staff, of council, uh, councillors. Uh, and there's, you know, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that and I won't be supporting the motion.
Councillors, with, uh, with all due respect, uh, my obligation as a councillor is to the ratepayers of Randwick City. And this is not an attack on staff. It is me fulfilling my obligations as an elected councillor to ensure that ratepayers' money is spent where we told them it was going to be spent. And councillor Roberts has made a great observation. He said, yes, costs do go up. But the fact is, they've only gone up on one section. One part has, the budget has not changed by one cent. And the other part has changed by five point four million dollars with absolutely not, nil increase in the scope of that facility. And as a councillor, I have every right to question that. And I have every right to, to put that out there because we went to a, a community consultation, we said we are go, we went to the bank. We committed a certain amount of money. And that has changed by quite a significant amount. A significant, even more of a significant amount if you consider that there, there was a twenty percent contingency. You, you can, you know, more than double that amount. So councillors, this is not about playing games. This is not about a stalling tactic. This is about a commitment to the, our ratepayers. And this, the motions that I've brought tonight are about expressing my concerns that we are, even if the gymnastics facility is not meeting the minimum requirements, it is still costing a lot of money. It is still costing a lot of money. And so as councillors, we actually need to ensure, are we committing a lot of money? Really significant amount of ratepayers' money to something that, you know, there's, there is a bit of doubt on it, actually. And we've got time. We've got time. We've got to put our plan of management out. We've got, we've got a few months. Why not step back and, and do this properly? You know, this is not, this councillor's not a rubber stamp for the reports that come. And I don't think anyone believes that. Councillors uh, make amendments and do things all the time and that is our job. The staff have their job and we have our job. Uh, and our main job is our commitment to representing our community and ensuring that the, the funds that are put towards these big projects, which are funded by ratepayers, are spent appropriately. And if there are doubts about that, I have, I, I am perfectly within my right to bring that to a council meeting. And I'm, I'm not sure why this is such a big deal. I'm not attacking anyone. Just simply fulfilling my obligation. And um, it seems actually pretty clear to me. There's no mystery in this. Two basketball courts that once cost twenty million dollars now cost twenty-five million dollars. A high performance centre that once cost twenty-five million dollars still costs the same. So why has there been an increase on only one section? It's a very simple question. It's pretty easy to understand. There's no mystery here. Uh, the only mystery is what has caused the cost increase and that's what I would like to find out.
I put it all those in favor, say aye. Against? No. I declare that lost. Yep, councillor Beech and councillor Parker were for the amendment. For the motion, sorry. So there's one last one. NM twenty-one slash twenty-one, sorry, NM twenty-nine slash twenty-one.
To be struck out of order, Mr. Mayor, is because considering the letter that we received today from the ATC, where it was quite clear that this motion could preempt and compromise the DA processes of this council for an application which is currently being assessed by council planners. Our DA processes are now independent of council and councillors and it's not the job of councillors to interfere in the process on the basis of a political agenda. On that note, I would ask that this motion be struck out because it's still being assessed by our council staff. And taking a position or moving a resolution in this council to, uh, to, not to support means that our council staff cannot do their job properly in assessing the application on its merits. Thank you.
I'm going to refer that to the director of city planning.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as, as councillors aware, um, they do not have a role to play in the assessment of development applications. Um, certainly councillors can make submissions and they can um, uh, attend the local planning panel meetings and um, speak um, to, to their objections to the panel. Um, the council's resolutions, um, such as these, um, would be um, a matter um, for, uh, for council. And if the resolution is made, um, it would be considered as an objection um, to the application.
Can I just ask, is it out of order?
Well, can I ask? Can I ask another question?
No, I just find the answer, does it, yeah.
That was your question, yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As the director of city planning has discussed, it is the council staff that do make an assessment. So any objection by council would be taken as a submission, the same as it would from a member of the community as they have to assess the um, application objectively.
Submissions to the planning panel, don't we? So this is pretty much the same thing.
So, so, sorry, can I just, I just, so, yeah, so is the answer, it's not out of order? That's all I need to know. Yes or no? I, I, I'm just going by the advice of the GM.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, the way that I look at it is, is you're preempting uh, a decision if it's your decision to make. Um, a planning and assessment in relation to a, a planning matter is not your decision to make as a council. Um, it is a, is a decision for the council staff to make. So, um, so it, it.
No, this is going to be the same.
Yeah, Little Bay's not being assessed. Can I just wait for a response, please? Councillor Andrews, I'll just wait for a response.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As um, as the director of city planning uh, did advise before, uh, councillors uh, on any given uh, assessment do make representations to planning panels and the likes. This would be the same. If it was moved by council, it would be uh, you doing it that as a group. The same, the same as, as, as individual councillors do to, to panels from time to time.
Okay, so do we have a seconded? Uh, it's councillor Mattson seconded. Question?
A development application, one six nine slash two thousand twenty-one, which has been lodged with Randwick City Council. So council um, has to deal with that development application. We have a councillor here that's got a motion put in forward, um, lodging her objection to it. It's not the place for council to do that. It should not be dealt with at council. The matter should be dealt with independently. If councillor Beech wants to make a submission, uh, as a private citizen, she's more than welcome to do so. As a councillor, she can do so, but not. Make a submission, but don't.
I just refer it to the, sorry councillor Andrews, I'll just refer to the.
Have a position.
Councillor, uh, refer to the GM.
If the question to me was, would I recommend council take a position, that answer would be no. Um, but in regards to um, the, the question in relation to uh, does it prejudice the decision? That decision is not a decision that would come before council as a body. But from a, 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 a reputational perspective and, and looking at it um, from uh, the view of perception of the community, I would not recommend taking a position uh, on the DA.
Thanks, um, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think obviously we have to um, pay very uh, close attention to the advice we just re- received from the general manager. Um, and the general manager has informed us uh, from a reputational perspective. Um, and I do note that the motion does say, G, not support proposals for night racing. So it's clearly taking a position.
Exactly.
Um, I, I, you know, I have some, I'm not comfortable, uh, given the um, uh, the advice we've, and recommendation we've received from the general man, general manager um, that we um, where we are taking a position. Can it not wait? Um, and can this matter be, could this matter not be deferred? I'll put the question through you, Mr. Mayor, to after the DA has been assessed. And then the council can take a position, um, without any reputational risk.
Exactly.
Um, as to uh, possible. Well. No, it's not too late. Well, how is it too late if we don't have the power?
No, the power.
I'm just, I'm just saying that if, if, well, if the intent, if it's too late, I'm, I'm concerned about the intent of the motion is, is to um, subvert, subvert the DA process. Is that, if it's, if, yeah, anyway. No, I think, well, my question is, well, I'm, I'm just a bit concerned because now being suggested that if we defer it, it's too late, which could only mean, I understand in reference to the DA, which is apparently, so I'm just concerned as a contradictory position being put here. But my simple question is, can this not be deferred until after the DA? At which time it's then open to the council and the councils to take a position. I can't see how that can be too late if it is just a submission. If a council wants to make a submission um, to the planning panel, they can. So I, I just would ask that I, through you, Mr. Mayor, is it possible to defer this matter until after the DA is assessed and determined?
I just go, I'm gonna get the question, no, sorry, I've got to get the question answered. Thank you. Please. We need to be informed. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with regard to the development application for the um, the skydiving um proposal, that is a delog- uh, a development application that would at this stage be determined on delego authority because it doesn't meet any of the criteria for referral to the local planning panel. So if it's a matter for delego authority, council officers will done, and take a review of the submissions. Um, and then if there aren't more than ten submissions, then the application will be determined on delego authority, which means the officer would do the assessment and then the um senior officer with delegation would then determine the application. So there would be no opportunity to do, undertake an assessment, refer it to council and then um consider a submission at that time. And that in effect would um essentially undermine the whole planning legislation in terms of council's role in relation to participation in the development assessment process. Um, the other matter is a state significant application and councillors will have that opportunity to, to consider council's submission to that um particular um uh public exhibition and um you'll have the opportunity to make a submission at that time.
So, so which aspects is the state significant part? Is that the night racing?
Night racing.
And the skydiving would be determined?
No, the DA.
And uh have difficulty with this then because we, we, we'd be voting not to support the proposal of a matter that's going to be determined by our staff. So I, I, I just, I, I, I can't support this.
Can I hear the amendment, please, councillor?
Councillor, this is an unusual DA. It's for skydiving at the racecourse, okay? It's not for, to build a, you know, an addition to someone's house or anything. So so could I, sorry, I've listened, I've listened to you all. I have listened to you all. Could I, could I just, could I just put forward the amendment to point G? That council make a submission to the department, you know, to Deep High and to the DA in respect of the two pro- for not, of, of the things for night racing the Royal Randwick Racecourse. And then you can vote against it or not and it's, that's just simply, you put the, I put it in amended form.
Would you like to speak?
Against it or not?
Um, look, there, there's nothing, I've got the call.
No, I'm, I'm proceeding with it. I'm proceeding with it and we'll vote on it.
I, I, I'm asking a question. Can I, I would like to put this as an amendment. I would just like to see, has my, has my amendment been put on, on the running minutes? With that, and I would like to ask if that would.
Councillors, can, so we can actually end the night. Can we please, it's the councillor Veach and we hear the amendment?
I would just like to finish my question through the chair to the relevant council officer. That point G be amended to say that council makes submissions expressing our concerns uh to the, to Deep High and the DA regarding night racing and skydiving. The applications. I, I'd, I'd just like to ask, would that be?
I've listened very carefully to the advice from both the director and the general manager. Um, to me, it's perfectly possible for councillor Veach to put this. Yes, the government has removed us from having any role in the assessment of DAs. But by doing that, they have made us on an equal footing to any member of the community. That means that we can, as individual councillors and as a united body of councillors, make a submission. This is exactly what we do with reports that come from the uh director of planning concerning matters to go to the Sydney Eastern City Planning Panel. If you remember, the wording of the recommendation is that, it is that councillors make a submission. We do not interfere into the assessment. That is quite well understood by the director and the planning staff. But if the government has removed us from playing any role in the assessing of a DA.
Can, can, I would, I think that we should put this. We should vote on this.
Can I have a seconda? Okay.
No, but my point of order is, not speaking to the motion, talking about the procedures and the conversation that we just had, we should put it. I think we've heard enough.
Can you just finish? But I will go back to the, I will ask to be put. Watch to finish, councillor Mattson. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. It's asked to be put. I haven't got to your point yet. I've still got a vote on the, on the put. Can, please, councillor Mattson, you're the seconder and the seconder is speaking. You did because you made it an amendment and you spoke on the amendment. Thank you. Go ahead, councillor Mattson.
Look, essentially the advice from the council, the general manager and the director is that we can make submissions. And that is simply because we have been removed from any role in the assessment process. Therefore, we have the freedom of any other stakeholder in the community. So it's perfectly legitimate to put, it is new territory, but, sorry? No, I'm clarifying it for your.
It's absolutely pathetic because we should have allowed a discussion on the amendment which would have allowed us, Mr. Mayor, which would have allowed us to have come.
Can you please, sorry, the auditor?